Ladies and gentlemen, this is the 14th January Board of Selectmen meeting. Broadcasting for the first time from our new meeting room on the first or main floor of Town Hall. Construction here is almost complete. Although it's only January, we're racing toward town meeting and that's reflected in some of the topics that we're going to be talking about today. We'll talk briefly about some pieces of the in-work capital budget and capital plan for the years fiscal years 15 through 20. Talk about some potential town meeting articles and what we anticipate coming and what the board might support. We're not going to finalize anything tonight, but we'll have preliminary discussion. Also talk about operational budget development. With regard to the capital items we have with us today, Mr. Michael from Comprehensive Environmental Incorporated. And then we're going to have a focused discussion on kind of where we are and some of the options and ways ahead regarding first phase of the transmission line, the water line. Before we begin, are there any announcements?
I don't have any.
Just had two reminders. One, if other boards or committees have proposed annual town meeting articles, they're due to the Board of Selectmen this month. And second, town meeting report inputs are due to the town administrator during the month of February or by the end of February. Anyone here for a community forum? No. How about? Let's come back, we'll come back in minutes. We have an add-on to the item agenda today. Mr. Steve Gahn from our ambulance department's here.
It's a very simple operational thing. The first part of it is that the ambulance director, Greg Gagnon, has moved. He had, he's had to sold his residence, he's moved. And in the process, he's phasing out of the ambulance operation and that's something that the board will have to address for the next, I would think, in the near future. In the interim, I've been now handling everything from the input on construction of the facility in the back to the budget, the capital plan, the payroll bills, et cetera. Basically, at this point, I'm doing all of the operation. Couple of things we ran into. I did, I did a payroll and we, we for years have, we pay, EMTs have mandatory training. We have very few of our EMTs are actually responsible for their training because a lot of our EMTs are employed somewhere else full-time and get their training there. In submitting payroll, we actually never, haven't used the EMT training column in so long that Edwina says it doesn't, it's not really in existence, it's not alive anymore. So it needs to be, it needs to be established again. It only makes operational sense. If we've actually been paying training out of the straight EMT wages account for years, then we're not actually getting an accurate representation of what is actual operational call pay and what does actual training pay. So it only makes sense to do it. We've actually been doing it for years. It has no financial impact on the budget. It just basically allows me to, by establishing the EMT training rate and spot, it just allows me to keep better track of where the money, where the pay is going.
Stephen, question for you. That's on your in-house budget, right?
Right.
Okay, so that, you control that, you can change that whatever way you want. When you submit the bottom line to us, we're looking at salaries and expenses and really we look at your budget how it's made up.
Okay.
But that's not what we're really, what we're looking at is the bottom line.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was easier accounting-wise to keep track of it. Because it, at one point had its own, it had its own, had its own line.
You can change that whatever way you want. In that, you can reconstruct that whole budget as long as your bottom lines are solid.
Yeah, bottom lines are absolutely there. But just the thing was, because Edwina says she, this did not work for her, unless we change it to the same account number, which is fine. I can keep one track of it. But my, accounting-wise, I didn't know if, what he thought about it, if it was easier just to have a separate number and that way we could.
That's something to do with your department.
Whatever is easiest for you.
Okay.
But I agree with you 100 percent.
Yeah, I just want to be, I want to see good representation. It's not a lot of money, but it's money and it's, it's in something that should be.
It's something you should track in your whole budget. That way you know exactly where you stand and how much you spend.
Right.
Okay? And how internally, if you got, if you had to add three more, four, four more columns, that's what you have to do.
Right.
Okay, but that's entirely up to you. And then you, once you're done, you submit it to us.
Does Edwina need anything from us?
I think if I use the same account number, probably not. Maybe I'll go to her, use the same account number and just break it out. If not, she would need guidance that that was okay. I guess what her concern was that she didn't have, didn't have a, an appropriate rate for training. We've always paid the same rate for training. Some of it's not easy, you know? We've paid the same rate for training and that was part of her concern. Because with some of the other departments they fire, they actually use a reduced rate for training. But they have, they have a vast, you know, greater, you know, amount of training. Ours is very localized. We're talking like 40 hours, 50 hours a year for one person. You know, it's a, it's very minute compared to the vast fire budget, so it's not as big a deal.
If you need additional.
I'll just submit something to him, to Paul.
Mike can give you the numbers that you're looking for, the, you know, for the top of the columns, what, what account numbers.
I have that, I have the budgets, I have the account numbers, I know which goes where.
So if you need to add another account, okay, you'd see Mike and Mike would assign a number to that.
Excellent, okay.
Or it's working with him.
The other issue that we run into is, excuse me. I was hoping Billy was coming in, but I guess he couldn't. And Paul is that I've actually now put in a vast number of hours way over in the last five, six months than, than my, what my regular position is. So in that, we submitted, I submitted extra hours, all of 15. You know, it's well more than 15, as they can vouch, they've seen me. But she said she can't actually compensate me for those hours because they're over and above, because I don't have, there's no, again, there's no item, no space for straight extra administrative hours, which is what I've logged a bunch doing. I'm going to do the budget tonight because Paul's going to now send me the budget. This is obviously, we're in a transition here and we have to handle the transition somewhere. Again, budget-wise, it all fits. It's not, there's nothing extra out of the budget. It's not, it all fits, everything works. In fact, the budget's going to fit fine for next year.
My recommendation, how about just give Paul the issues that need to be resolved and let Paul.
Okay. I'll give Paul the hours and everything.
Right. You're going to be reimbursed for your.
Yeah, no, I broke them down. I have hours, I broke them down to hours and meetings and events, so it's all very detailed. And Edwina's like, hey, I just need to make sure this is good with them. And I said, that's perfectly fine. And I contacted Paul, I said, hey, just put me on the agenda. So in the meantime, I guess we'll work with Paul about a transition. And Billy, you know, I think it should be a collective collaborative discussion.
I suggest that we put on the agenda in the next near future to discuss what we're going to do with the ambulance part. Greg, is, when is he going to turn in?
I don't know.
Because if he doesn't turn it in, then we're just going to dissolve him from, from the position.
Right. Paul's contacted him, I contacted him.
And then we're going to have to discuss what we do with it because the intention down back, back when this all started was to look at the fire chief taking over.
I think, I think putting them together is probably a reasonable decision.
Head of department and let Bill run the whole thing, the budget and the whole bit. And then however he wanted to place you in whatever position that needs to be done.
Chief Valden and I have talked about that as a very viable option, as this is probably a very good time that we can probably bring it all together.
Maybe we should hit that at our next meeting.
Well, I'm out of town the next meeting, that's the problem. I'm going to be gone.
We'll work it out.
So I'll get in touch with Paul, we'll get on the agenda.
Get the pay straightened out with Paul and financing.
Mostly I wanted to make sure you get the ball rolling and it's not mine, I'm okay, but it's obviously I got others that I've got to pay the training for, so they've done it. So, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 10 December?
So moved. Let's see, 10 of December.
Okay, for discussion.
From backwards, hold on a second there.
Well, Ed's looking on second page under the Mass Works grant. It reads in the second line, said there are small town growth grants, it's road grants. Other than that. Any other? Did you have any other changes?
No, I didn't have anything.
All in favor, as amended? Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 11 December?
So moved. I can't second, I was not here.
Okay, I'll second.
Oh, okay, one change. I'm sorry. Jan wasn't here, so we have to just put an absent back beside his, that's all.
Okay, subject to that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 19 December?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Just one comment on these. There's a, a number of things we talked about that are kind of still hanging that Jericho Road, for example, have we ever answered, Mr. Harlow? Kind of where are we on Phase Two of the Dyke project? I mean, just item, item after item here that are still open, so just because we closed the minutes, let's.
Yeah, I think on that Dyke project, they're supposed to come in, what, next? I think everything's all set, other than them coming in next summer, low water.
Low water, yes.
So everything, everything else is set.
So the grant was approved? I know we thought we were going to get it, everything I'd ever heard, we finally got it.
No, the submittals into the grant.
Pardon?
To extend it, yes. The submittals in, we haven't heard for sure.
Okay, so we haven't confirmed, okay.
What was on this for you?
Never Phase Two, the Dyke restoration?
Yeah. We approved to move forward on the.
Yeah, we have the funding to extend. I was just asking if even the grant had been yet approved and APW is saying it's not yet.
It's going to be an extension to the grant, basically. Because there's monies available and it's just going to be, I think it's going to be under the same thing.
Okay, well, bottom line is a whole bunch of actions there.
While we're still on the minutes, Jeff, you hit, you hit a good point here. There's so many minutes that we, there's so many things that we talked about, there's so many things that we were supposed to do and they're not being done. I guess it's time that we have accountability on what's going on here, okay? Between Paul and Phil, I truly think that there ought to be a list that was made on what needs to be done and then we bring it up at the next meeting and we discuss that list as far as where it's going. It's not up to us to make that list, it's up to you guys to make that list, okay? And that's not being done. I'm sure if I went through all these minutes and back, and I know you probably have all that list, Jeff, that's the list that you should be making, Paul and Phil, you should be making that list.
Well, for example, we had a discussion with Town Treasurer, talked about town collectors using Point, someone else uses Excel, someone else uses some other program, you know, software could be one answer, one tool to help us do better and facilitate some of those activities. I mean, on and on and on, there's, there's just a number of things.
I mean, we got, we got the 350th hanging out there, we've got lunch breaks, there was an issue on lunch breaks, that's still hanging out there, there's just a long list of things.
I'm just reminding, we have a number of things to do and don't want things to fall by the wayside. First, first item, talking about capital projects. We're going to talk more in detail about the various items that are in the very draft stage. But one of the items we wanted to focus on today and Mr., I said earlier, Mr. Michael is here from Comprehensive Environmental to help us walk, walk through it, has to do with the water transmission lane, main. And to recall, we've run into a little bind with regard to an inability to cross over the Chestnut Street Bridge over 91 because of corrosion on the utility bay and looking at jacking under 91 and increased costs, something around $400,000. So just trying to sort out a way ahead in terms of options, timing, costs, those kinds of things. Mike, appreciate you being here.
No problem, my pleasure. We're helping to move forward. As we've talked in the past, the project, overall project consists of replacing the water line from the treatment plant down Rocks Road to West Street. And then the original plan was to go down Chestnut, going across 91 on the existing Mass DOT bridge and then eventually crossing the railroad there and also crossing the Mill River and eventually terminating somewhere around Plain Road or Gorath. In the process of permitting the project through Mass DOT, it was determined by Mass DOT that the existing utility bay in that bridge had corroded to the point that it was not suitable for adding any further loads at this point without doing major structural work, which I'm sure Mass DOT would be more than happy to have the town fix their bridge, but that is very cost prohibitive. So at that point, we looked at other alternatives for getting the water main across that highway. Because it's a major highway, Mass DOT requires anything that's buried be jacked under, which is essentially pushing a larger diameter sleeve than what your pipe is, pushing that under the highway. And then your pipe, the water main, actually would go within it. And the reason for that is if something should fail on the water main in the future, you could theoretically pull it back from either end and should say, in the case of a water main, there'd be a leak, the leak would be directed outside of the limits of the highway and not disrupt the paved surface. So the long and short of it is, the jacking process is a more expensive process than simply hanging the water main within the existing utility bay. The initial estimate of the cost impact of the project was, as Mr. Boyle said, about $400,000 extras as a ballpark estimate. And what we did is we went ahead and bid, split the project into two phases in order to keep the project moving while we sorted out this piece of the project, both funding-wise and it requires separate permitting through Mass DOT. Permitting-wise, the, we ended up having to do additional survey and borings along the alignment of the proposed jacking, which is approximately 100 feet north of the bridge is where it will be located. And there, you know, we didn't run into any surprises there, which is a good thing. It's all fairly fine sands and silt, high groundwater, but that's pretty typical of everything else we've seen in the area. So it should be a fairly straightforward jacking project. Groundwater will be an issue, but they usually address that simply with numerous dewatering wells as the work is going on. We are submitting the permit application for the actual jacking process to Mass DOT today.
Oh, okay.
And I'm anticipating, I'll have a schedule I'll give to you momentarily, anticipating roughly a month to two-month review time. Separately, as I said, we did bid the first portion of the water main project back in the summer. That work was essentially covers everything from the treatment plant down to West Street, right up to where this jacking would start. It was as far as we could go without getting these other permits in place. That project has been going on since, I think, actual construction started late October, early November. They've made some of the critical connections, which was tying into the existing water main up by the treatment plant successfully. They're making relatively slow progress in part due to the weather, winter conditions, and just with the holidays in between. So I'm not concerned about their schedule right now. They have a contract completion date of August 16th. There are no reasons to date why, that would justify an extension. They haven't asked or hinted at anything, so I'm fully expecting that they will be done by that point. And I think once, you know, they get some steady progress going, they've now gotten to where they should be able to just be laying pipe down Rocks Road. It will be still slow going because there's rock that they will have to blast and deal with, so that's moving along. That project was including the bid price and a 5% contingency, which is a typical contingency to carry during construction. That cost of that project was roughly $1.5 million. The next phase, which would be the jacking under 91, continuing on jacking under the railroad on Chestnut Street, moving down Chestnut Street to Mill River, there's a utility bridge that will be put in over the Mill River and then connecting on down to, like, Plain Road. That is projected to be about a million dollars, that next phase of work. What I can do is I prepared a, kind of a draft.
And as I recall, we do have the permit to go under the railroad.
Yes.
Is there any sunset clause on that permit?
We've checked into that, there is a completion date and we're already in contact with the railroad to get that extended.
Okay.
So that should, most permits, if you contact them before it's expired, it's a simple extension for a year or whatever the case may be.
Mike, is there any, because there's no funds available for that $400,000, is there any, I don't know what it would cost to put it into three phases and we should have probably extended right down through under the railroad and up to Gorath Avenue underneath this first contract and just leave that one section over 91 out and let that been the second one?
Well, the problem with that functionally is it's, the whole purpose was to replace the existing water main that right now runs predominantly cross-country from Lindsayd to West Street and then continuing on, you know, under the Mill River. Without that piece in the middle.
Well, I know that, but that piece in the middle will happen, but what I'm saying is the longer it's delayed, I mean, we can be putting in the rest of the pipe, getting it under there, and then we've just got to fit, fit the center part in, okay? Instead of doing the whole thing, it's just a waiting game until we get the funds available for going underneath 91.
Okay.
All right.
But we need the million dollars. The 1.433 is Phase 1A.
Correct.
What we're doing right now.
Yes.
We're down to the old Chestnut Street crossing.
Yes.
Before 91 was built.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the 1.433.
Correct.
So we don't, it's not just the $400,000. We need the 1, the 1.0 roughly that Mike is talking about includes the $400,000, does it not?
Correct, and the balance of that is within your existing appropriation.
So it's within, so we should be able to do the whole project, you're saying, underneath the same?
Yeah, it's the 1.4 that includes, excuse me, the 1 million includes the jacking, correct?
Correct.
The 1 million.
Okay, let's, let's back up here. For the first phase.
First phase.
The initial thing was what, 3.1 million, 3.5 million?
First, first phase.
2.4.
First phase is from the reservoir to Rocks Road, down Rocks Road, coming south on West Street to where the old crossing was for the original Chestnut Street intersection with Route 5 and 10. And then there's, I think there's a section also that runs up to the, connects with the Betzel reservoir, or Betzel well out there.
That was totally separate, just bring it out to the street and make that connection.
What was the contract price?
So we're sitting right there.
Phase 1, what's the contract price?
The actual bid price was 1.433 and then.
1.442?
No, 433.
432.
So, so now we're talking about a million dollars to go.
So you have just a little less than a million dollars left in that budget.
That, that budget included engineering costs, both design and construction phase services. So the current total projected cost, including the 1 million construction estimate and all the rest are, you know, bid, construction bid costs and firm engineering costs, the total is like 2, just over 2.8 million compared to the 2.4.
How did that happen, Mike?
Because originally it was 2.4 and now you added additional cost of $400,000 for the jacking.
It's directly attributable to the jacking versus the utility bay.
Okay, but if we've already expended 1.43.
Yes.
Okay, that would give us roughly 1 million dollars left from the original 2.4 million.
That doesn't, and then there's engineering fees that come out of there for the design phase and construction phase services. Now some of.
The actual construction.
Wasn't the actual construction 2.4 million for the water line that we approved at town meeting, wasn't that the whole picture?
That was the whole picture from the plant down to, say, Plain Road.
Yeah.
That was the original intent, that's still.
Where did it change from there?
The change happened with the crossing of 91.
Okay, but that was just an additional $400,000.
Right, correct. So that makes it 2.8.
But what?
2.4 plus 4 is, 0.4 is 2.8.
Okay, I was backing out the 1.4 that we just spent for Phase 1. So that's what I was saying. Phase 1 is 1.4, you back that out, you have a million dollars left. So that means you have a million dollars and if you add $400,000 to that, you have 1.4 million to complete the project. And you're saying it's 2.8 from this point?
No.
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at.
From the starting point, if I look at the funds available right now, it's 1.4 million, which was the roughly, the appropriation.
Okay.
2.4, sorry about that. To date.
Who's on first?
Wait a minute.
So the funds available.
Boy, you're just saying 1.4, which.
No, I scratched the 1.4. It's 2.4 million is the current appropriation for this.
I understand that, okay.
So that's, I look at that as, well, that's what we have, we can't go over.
Right.
On the actual cost side, the committed costs are between actual construction and then the monies for design and construction phase services are, let's see, 1.8. So that's, that includes the 1.4 plus contingency of construction costs for this first phase that's already been signed, he's out there working.
So you're saying, we're not saying the same thing here, because you're saying 1.8 now.
I'm saying that's already committed between the construction contract, which is 1.4, plus, we always carry 5% contingency because you just do not know.
Okay.
And I would not commit, you know, bump up against the appropriation without carrying a contingency. So that brings it to 1.5 for construction, roughly 300,000 between the design and construction phase services, some of that which hasn't been spent today because it carries us through both phases. So that's the 1.8 that's committed.
So it leaves you 900,000 left for the next phase, with the way it sits right now.
It's 2.4 versus the 1.8.
600,000.
Yeah, 600,000. And I'm saying my current estimate for the construction cost of that is including a contingency, when admittedly, for that, I'm carrying a 10% contingency, we haven't bid it yet, there's a lot of unknowns. This next phase is not as competitive because you end up having, it's a very, the jacking itself is specialty work. You have a limited pool of contractors, so it just depends on what their market is and how aggressively they pursue the project. So that next construction phase, I'm saying, including contingency, my estimate is 1 million.
So we need to go back at some point to get 400,000.
Bottom.
400?
400,000.
That would be a safe number. And what I would, what I throw out is if you look at the schedule, and it's just the way things have played out with the whole permitting process and having to go back to DOT for this jacking. to DOT for this jacking. We have to have that permit, the permit for jacking is a multi-step process. We actually do, we had to get a separate permit to just do the borings so that they agreed with the alignment and where we were proposing to do this. That happened in the fall. We now are submitting an application to say, here's the proposal, we're going to do a thirty-six inch diameter casing, sixteen inch water main, it's going to be on this alignment, here's the borings, uh, here are the soil conditions, and they will give the go-ahead. Their permit conditions will require the contractor to then do a separate application once he gets the job, which details how they're going to brace the jacking pits, how they're going to de-water, because we typically don't get into the means and methods that the contractors use. So we're in that second phase of the permit, it will allow us to get the, put this project out to bid. Uh, we're anticipating, you know, worst case, it'll take them two months to get back and approve that, uh, through Mass DOT. It would allow us to put this out to bid in March and April and have by the end of April, firm bid prices for this next phase. So I anticipate that your meeting would be, your town meeting would be in May.
Middle of May.
Middle of May, so by town meeting, we would have a firm number now and not just, well, I think it's a, it's a million including contingency, it'll be, here's the bid price plus five percent contingency, here's what, here's the exact number we need. Separate from that, I'm proposing to bid the project as a base bid and an alternate. And the reason for that is, well, what if, uh, the additional appropriation doesn't get approved? What's the fallback? Uh, the base bid would be still progressing down, you know, from the plant towards town. The base bid would be the I ninety-one jacking and the railroad, get those pieces done, make the connection even through into Brockway Smith because that's where the existing, we need to do that for their service ultimately, but that's also where the current water main is. So we would be able to make that connection. My estimate is that last piece then, the Mill River, you know, from Brockway Smith further east, would be roughly the three to four hundred thousand funding gap that we have right now. You know, completely dependent upon the bid conditions and how the bid prices were, you know, come in, but roughly that Mill River crossing is probably two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand by itself.
Okay, my question, I guess, to you, Mike, is that the, the, is there any grant money out there available for this? I mean, we're running right in front of Brockway Smith, we have a business that we're taking care of, that's, that's high demand for, for water, okay, they have fire protection, all that stuff for there, is there anything available that's going to help us along with that four hundred thousand dollars?
Unfortunately, there isn't.
Okay.
The, the closest that comes to it is this whole, the Mass Works program that we've tried for several years and most recently, they really shifted the focus of the program to housing.
Okay. My next question now is, where do we stand between Phil and Paul with getting in touch with our state rep and our state senator?
We, we already.
Okay, we sent letters, but we didn't follow up, we didn't do any of that stuff, all right? We need help here, because I, I don't particularly see four hundred thousand coming from Town Hall floor, okay? Uh, unless you're cutting everything else out of the budget for this year.
Well, we're going to talk about other type of projects.
But my point being is that I think we really need to be on top of it, maybe even get them here or go and see them to see what's going on here and see if we can get this four hundred thousand, because this is a state problem, they created a problem for us, and it's not fair that we should bear the brunt of this cost. And I'd like to put them on a carpet and find out where the heck they are and let them come and explain to people why we're at where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because the bridge is not safe, okay? That's not fair to us, you know?
Well, the giant vacuum is the I ninety-one section through Springfield, that's where your bridge and road dollars are going to be going here for the next few years and.
Yeah. And I know you're, Jeff, you're familiar with the tip program and when you see the list of projects that's on that tip.
The thing there is.
Compared to the monies that are available, it's just get in line and wait.
They know we have a ticking time bomb behind Brockway Smith.
Yeah.
And that can be anytime, and if that goes, they're going to have to give us money to fix it, and it'll be a heck of a lot more than four hundred thousand dollars, okay? So.
Okay, so.
I don't have to preach to you because you know that.
No, no, that, Mike's the engineer and it's not his problem, fortunately.
Well, it's frustrating in our, in our parts here.
I'd love to have money to fund these projects.
Uh, okay, so, we're okay down to essentially West Street opposite the old intersection, the original intersection of Chestnut Street and Route Five and Ten. And you're, you're proposing as, as a way to parse this for Phase One B, uh, a bid with this, uh, alternate would be get over to Brockway Smith underneath the ninety-one and the railroad.
Correct.
And then stop or whatever, anyhow comes out and then.
With the existing appropriation.
Correct. And, and the, the downside of that is, you just hit the nail on the head, Ed, with, one of the critical problem areas is where the water main, the existing water main goes under the Mill River right now, behind Brockway Smith. With the current appropriation, that piece will still remain undone or unfixed. I looked at, well, could you, would it make sense to do that first? Get, you know, get across the Mill River, uh, trouble, and then what would you do in an emergency? There isn't a way to really make it work because you're now talking about maybe doing bypass piping above ground, which you could do, but you were not going to be allowed to run it over the railroad. So we have to get under that railroad.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we can set this up so that the end of this limited scope, if we end up having to end at, just right at Brockway Smith's driveway with a hydrant, that you would allow pipe to be strung over the existing Mill River Bridge to connect to a further hydrant and bypass that section under the Mill River should something happen in the future before, you know, if the funding isn't there.
Mm-hmm.
It would be much easier, that would be a nice fix, uh, and might save, I know, it would be extremely expensive to go do work out in that wet environment to repair that main.
Okay, so, so you're talking, if, if we took that to town meeting this time, we'll, we'll have that discussion, probably, probably multiple times.
Yeah.
Uh, then we could make that award for that alternate after town meeting?
That's, what we would do is you'd structure the bid so that, and I talked to the Attorney General's office to clarify this, so that we didn't run into a bid protest.
Yeah.
Because when you use alternates, you have to be careful about setting them upright so it's not construed or interpreted as you're picking and choosing things to get the contractor you want. So, uh, what we would do is base the award upon the lowest of the combination of the base and the alternate, regardless of whether the funding is in place or not.
Okay.
You wouldn't actually award that, but that would be the basis of award. And then if the additional appropriation is not approved, you would then just reduce the scope and award the base bid. It would be a separate negotiation with the contractor down the road as to, could you swap that back in as a change order at the same cost or, there's a limit to how long you can have a contractor hold their pricing. And, and maybe we can structure that, because when I look ahead at the schedule, this should be a much quicker project.
Yeah.
It's intensive pieces, but not as much linear feat. So assuming the funding is approved at town meeting and we do everything right down to Plain Road and make the connections and get rid of this, uh, water supply risk to the town. Then if we, yeah, assuming the money's approved, you could sign contracts via July first that the appropriations are in place and given the lead times on stuff and actual construction work, the schedule shows everything being done by the end of the year. So, we might be able to put a provision in the contractor, have them hold that price as a change, potential change order if that's something you were interested in.
Well, it's very helpful to me, I'm just trying to get a.
How are we going to make this work?
How to make it work and, never easy, but.
Oh.
You have a plan, I appreciate very much, I mean, you have a plan that hangs together, it's executable.
Yeah.
If we get funding, fine, if we don't get funding, well, let's.
We can do as much as we can.
We can, we'll do what we can.
The other, I think we're done with that part.
Okay.
Thanks. I'd like to ask you on the Route Five quarter, the grant that we applied for, grant money again, was again, um, denied, okay, even though we have had the project that they asked for and stuff, did you get any input on that?
I didn't directly on the Hatfield proposal, uh, but I did, uh, we're currently putting in a proposal for a project that was approved through Mass Works in Melrose. And so I know now what their package was, and it was, uh, essentially road, streetscape improvements around a commuter rail station that then they had a very specific property identified with substantial investment, uh, focused on housing. So it all tied into the mass transportation and this housing focus, yeah.
All the housing is, is out in the eastern part of the state. I went to a meeting and that's where they're focusing because most of their young people from the Boston area are moving out.
Right.
So they want to keep them people there, so that's why the housing is out there. We are not getting anything here for months.
Right, and, and they're dealing with, you know, it might be, it's like an infill lot, it's not even an infill, it was like an old factory or something that they're now going to convert the housing and that, that seems, based on the selection and.
Criteria.
Criteria and what, who they picked this time around, that seems to be what was funded. What caught my eye though is they still, the whole program, uh, Mass Works program has different categories of things that you can file for, and one of them is a, what used to be the strap program or small town, uh, rural assistance program, which funded transportation safety projects. I noticed Hadley received a grant award and it was essentially they, the town were, their share was going to be putting a water main connection in, uh, I think it was less than a thousand feet. And then Mass Works was covering the cost of road improvements for public safety purposes. It may be worth looking at what, is there something in town that fits that category?
We tried that, Mike.
Okay.
It cost us three and a half, two and a half million dollars, okay, that we brought the water line down in, in good faith, that the town was putting in a couple million dollars here, and the state says, well, we're not going to fund the project, so.
No, but this is much.
Our good faith ended up costing us.
This is, this is much smaller scale, uh, maybe hundreds of thousands.
Mike, Mike is talking about a subset of the Mass Works grant program, and we, we've talked about that before, where the, where towns, I think it's under population of five thousand.
Correct.
You can make application for some road.
So my question is, would, since you're working on it, would the North Street project fit into that?
Well, let them incorporate the bridge repair work and then we can get our water line online, okay? Maybe that's what the state ought to be looking at.
They won't touch Mass DOT branch.
All right, let them fix their, their bridge and, uh.
They did, they posted it, if you haven't noticed.
Oh, did they post it?
Yes, they had.
Great.
There you go.
Great, that's their solution.
Yeah.
That's their solution, that's it.
And unfortunately, just, I mean, you hear it straight from the State House, you know, there's a push to increase funding on infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, because they recognize there's this huge backlog of bridges and roads that need repair. Unfortunately, we're just in a long list of projects.
Okay, I got one other thing for you, Mike.
Sure.
On the job meetings, as far as what's coming down Rocks Road, the water line, all right, is there any been, has there any job meetings been set up where we can, let us know when it is so we could maybe attend it just to see what's going on?
We had an initial project meeting to get things going and kind of lay down the law with the contractor as to what was accepted and how things were going to work. Since then, they, it's been more kind of job site meetings as needed, uh, we haven't had formal meetings, if, uh, you would like to, we can certainly arrange something.
Well, I'd, I'd certainly like at least one or two before they complete the project because you'd want the public, if there's a problem going along, going along that route with the landowners, I'd want them to come forward and at least have a say instead of just blasting through and doing the project and then, you know, end up with problems. So if you have a job meeting, this could be brought up at the meeting and rectified at the time.
Yeah, they have the, I know one property owner has been expressing his concerns as we've been going along, and it has been more to do with coordinating, say, they want access to their parcel for logging, uh, and how do we coordinate with the contractor's activities, recognizing it's a very limited right-of-way and you just cannot have two things passing.
Well, it's sixty feet, how can you say it's limited?
Pardon?
There's sixty feet up there.
But it's wooded, it's wooded and it's on, perched on a hillside.
Okay.
So when you go up there, we've allowed the contractor to clear a bit more than they need it, you know, than the actual, there was a defined cart path dirt road, that was limited, it varies anywhere from ten feet wide to not even twenty feet, I bet, at the, at the best. So it was essentially a single lane dirt road through there, kind of cut into the hillside. You know, we're just doing enough additional clearing so that equipment can swing around and things like that. We're not creating this full cleared right-of-way, full sixty feet, so.
So that would be the only reason I was asking for a job meeting, just in case.
Now, maybe as an alternative, and it may be, because I know people find it difficult, it would always be, well, when do you set up that meeting so people are available? Do we just send a separate notice to, uh, the abutters and saying, here's, here's the contact information, if you have any concerns as the project's going on, get ahold of us, get ahold of Tony, get ahold of us. We, I, that may be more effective, I think, in reaching people and actually getting, there may be ongoing complaints, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I mean, from what I'm hearing, things are moving along, I mean, it's fairly slow going and I know, uh, Tony, who likes to just jump in and, you know, get things done, he's getting frustrated by the slow progress of the contractor, but it's like, it's their crew cost, it's, you know, we competitively bid it, so he's got to get it done with the money he's committed to. So if he takes longer than he planned, that's his problem.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
No, no problem, I, while I'm here.
And your suggestions.
Well, I have, uh, can, want to touch, touch base on a couple of items.
Sure.
The, going back to the fall, uh, town had received a consent order to, or a deficiency notice on the wastewater side from, on the plant because of the last permit required the preparation of a nitrogen optimization evaluation at the wastewater plant. Uh, and the deadline had passed, it had not been done, so we have been working on that through the fall, completed that and submitted that into DEP, uh, working with Phil and Brian. And just, uh, the, the background of it is on the regulatory side. On the regulatory side. There are nitrogen loading issues or excess nitrogen in the Connecticut River, which eventually ends up down in Long Island Sound. Excess nitrogen leads to, you know. Excessive aquatic plant growth, algae and such that then will just change the whole nature of the water body. Can change the pH, it changes the ability of fish to survive because it changes the oxygen levels. So the states or environmental agencies determine. What each water body can tolerate in terms of a nitrogen loading. And then they go back and look at, well, what are the sources, including wastewater plants? And then just regular runoff. And especially in these communities in this area with a lot of agricultural use. Of course, there's a lot of nitrogen. It's intentionally being applied. Right now, the regulatory agencies don't have a means of regulating those non-point sources, which is the runoff. So we'll just set that aside. So their focus shifts completely to point sources, which are wastewater plants. So right now, the current permit that the town has, which is for the discharge of treated effluent to the river. Last permit that was issued added some new provisions. It added the provisions for monitoring nitrogen levels. Various forms of nitrogen on a monthly basis. There's no set limits right now, but you're monitoring it. And then separately was this request or requirement to do a. Just to look at what was going on and ideas on, within the existing operations. Were there opportunities to improve removal of nitrogen? And the next step I foresee permitting wise is eventually this is headed towards an actual numeric limit. So this is, you know, those permits are good for five years. It's coming. It may or not, may not be the next permit. Some of the things, the key points that we observed in going through that evaluation was. The, right now, the facility has, was designed for three rotating biological clarifiers, contacters. And two of them are, have been recently replaced. The third one.
It's gonna be the.
Is going to be.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a huge step to get that one back in operation, just because it shifts all the loading to the other two. And separately, the current septic loads that come in are quite variable. And so the plant gets a combination of wastewater through its collection system, which is, has certain characteristics. And then septic waste, which is being pumped out of septic systems and hauled and then discharged in, you know. More concentrated time periods, has its own characteristics. And. Right now, the amount that's coming in, in short periods of time. I'm sure is overloading the ability of the treatment system to address, to take care of it in terms of nitrogen. So it's just something that ideally, if you could spread it out.
Coming, coming from the sewer system or coming from the septic?
Coming from the septic. In a perfect world, if you were able to kind of set it offline and meter it in on a very gradual continual basis, that would be perfect. It's not practical, but anything you can do in that direction is how, gonna help.
Is this in the sludge part of it?
It is, it is.
Okay.
Just because of the amount of nutrients and organics. And the fact that it's been sitting and aging changes its. Composition too.
That's an important factor. That's the reason we went up on our, our prices on septic.
Okay.
Okay, is to take care of the sludge part, because we knew that was part of a problem. How much nitrogen is acceptable and how much are we over in that plant?
There's no limit right now.
There's no limit right now. What, what are the measurable limits right now?
Measurable limits, it varies seasonally. It's typically more difficult in the cold weather. But I know like, one of the times, it's, if you look at the septic receiving, it makes perfect sense with how things really are happening. Some places may pump out their systems on a semi-annual basis, so it may be spring and fall. So you start hit the spring when it's still cold temperatures and it's not, the. Wastewater treatment process is purely biological. You're relying on a. You're cultivating an actual biological community on those contactors, on those treatment systems. And that is what's consuming the nutrients and.
Alright, I guess where, I, I should tell you where I'm going with this here, okay? What my concern is, the amount of sludge that's being brought into the plant, okay? The dollar figure it's gonna cost us, because we're gonna have to monitor it on a monthly basis now, the nitrogen in the, in the plant.
Right.
Alright, that's costly. So, once we find out what that cost is, and then we found out what the source is, okay? Then it reflects back on the price that we're charging to dumping the sewer. Hatfield is no different than any other town in the community. It's gonna have to have the same problem here.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to be on top of what we're charging for septic systems to be unloaded into our, our. Our unit up here and get the dollar that we're supposed to be getting here. Okay, so that's where I'm coming from here.
Exactly, and make sure they're covering their, their cost or their impact.
Covering the cost of it, okay, because we found the source, okay, the source is the sludge and that's from the pumping of the septic systems. So, I mean, we have reports of, Water Health passes them on to DPW. Every time we get pumping reports, we pass them on. So we know exactly how many gallons are being pumped into that system. So, but what we don't know is what the nitrogen level is right now versus how to, you know, and how, how do you take the nitrogen out of the system? Okay, how do you remove the nitrogen? I guess that's a question for you.
Well, you say it phase, if you could phase what the delivery, so they all don't come in spike.
Yeah, some of the.
Strategy.
Say a typical residential system, but in and of it by itself, is not going to be a big impact. Cause it's just not, the quantity isn't that much. But if you get, say, a hauler who's accumulating. A bunch and then shows up with, you know, a full nine thousand gallon tank or something.
They do.
And, right, and that has a significant impact on the plant. If you could set that nine thousand gallons aside. On, at the treatment plant and meter it in over time, that would help significantly. But there's a cost to doing that. You're gonna have to do something on site for storage and.
Mike, would it, does it make a difference if it's dumped directly in there or say, and I know they, they do this down on Depot Road? That pumping station, they'll dump there and it's pumped up to this.
It buys you a little time.
Yeah.
And I know Brian does that specifically for that reason. He will get to these points where he just can't take more. The kind of storage tank that he has at the treatment plant is very limited. Inside, just a couple thousand gallons, I believe. So very quickly, if somebody shows up, he's gotta have them dump it. In, or discharge it into like the King Street. Pumping station, which has a sizable wet well that can then accommodate that. And then it's all blended with the normal wastewater and it's, it helps.
Okay, so another solution to this would be to come up. And if two households were pumped out at the two and fifteen hundred gallons apiece, because that's what usually the septic tanks are, a thousand to fifteen hundred. Then you're looking at about three thousand gallons. What would be the max that we would allow, instead of having a guy come with nine thousand gallons?
Right.
If you come.
How do we tell them to spread it out?
Yeah, if you pump out one household, you go and you dump it, that's fifteen hundred gallons. I know it's more money for him. You know, or more time and costly, but that'll solve our problem.
Yeah, and I, the, I can look into that to try to come up with a recommended number.
So if you come up with some kind of a number that, okay, that's all he can dump is five hundred gallons, or I mean, five thousand gallons or four thousand gallons, whatever the case may be. Then, then that's what we may have to do.
Cause the, you can put a firm number on, say, ultimately you're discharge or getting rid of the concentrated sludge. Yourselves, and there's a cost to that, because you're having to haul it and pay to discharge it.
In our reports, we want to know how much sludge is basically in there. And when they pump, they can tell if there's four, five, six inches. The normal is about three to four inches in your tank, okay, but then it can go to six to eight inches, depending on how many years that's.
Yeah, it's been sitting there.
Pump your tank out. So the longer you wait to pump your tank out, the more costly it could get in this case.
Correct, correct.
So the people that in town really have to understand that, you know, it's important that you pump your tank out every other year or once a year. It's not gonna cost you as much, because sludge is gonna be the costly upgrade. And we can't just charge on the sludge part, because it's, it's really, I talked with the vendor and he said it's just almost impossible to figure out how much. So we have to charge everybody, okay? So even the people that are doing that. If they wait five years, they're, they're paying the same rate as the other person, which is not fair to the other person. So. We have to come up with some kind of a solution here.
Right. Yeah, because it does end up having real costs at the treatment plant end, just in terms of trying to keep things running. And keeping the system working, you know, it, you kind of shift as, if you get a nine thousand gallon load, all of a sudden Brian's shifting into kind of a crisis. Just to keep things from falling apart instead of having it under control.
So I, I guess one way to do it is you pump out X amount of tanks and you dump it from town to Hatfield.
Well, you would have to set some kind of a, a daily limit of what you're gonna intake.
Yeah, that would certainly help.
You're gonna have to do that, because you can't control the septic haulers. I mean, if one guy brings nine thousand, the next guy wants to come in, he can't.
Correct, and that becomes a little more difficult, because who gets there first?
He goes pumps two tanks and pumps and.
And what we don't want to have happen is, we don't want our system going up the sunland and so on and so forth, okay? Because they're gonna have to come up with some kind of a solution also for theirs. So I think it's, the whole thing's gonna be revamped and how, how we're doing business.
You're gonna have to set a daily limit down there of what you're gonna take in for septic.
Well, you could have it scheduled.
And I can get back to you too on what would be the cost of, what are we talking about in terms of additional storage? At the plant site that would then get pumped in over time. It would address the multiple haulers over. It may not be a crazy cost. And maybe that cost gets factored into the septic rates.
But I think we need more numbers from you on the nitrogen levels, what the levels are now versus where we want to be, all that stuff, gonna have to be calculated out.
It's hard to say, because we don't have specific testing on the septic. So to separate it out in terms of this is what's being contributed from septic. That may be something we want to do, is start getting sporadic samples on that so we can better refine. What the solution is. Something else we saw that's kind of a totally separate issue is. The pH level as throughout the treatment plant is critical to making it work right. And at times, it, there's been wide fluctuations in that. It's all related and may in fact be partly due to significant septic loads.
It's a spiked load. That's what it is that comes in there.
It would be, looking at what's out there, it would be very simple and minimal cost to add a chemical. Kind of a pre-treatment chemical addition, just a simple drum with a metering pump. When we looked, there is an existing pipe conduit from one of the, I think it's like the screen room. That then ends up discharging directly into the headworks, which is where you'd want to put it. So. I can get you a cost on that. It's very minimal.
But then you're looking at some kind of a monitoring system on the pH and when it comes into the tank or into the system. As soon as it recognize, recognize the pH, when it gets to a certain point, it injects, that's what you're saying?
I wouldn't automate it. I would rely on grab samples. The automated system would be costly and not reliable.
That's what I was concerned about. That's what I thought you were talking about, okay?
I'd keep it simple to just be a more manual operation when, based on either you know you're getting a load that has a pH, potential pH impact. Or you just see the pH changing because of environmental factors.
But the pH factor comes from, usually it comes from like a business, okay? The minute you start adding chemicals or whatever, the pH factor changes. Unless somebody's in their house and they're dumping chemicals down the drain, that's gonna change your pH in the water levels. So to recognize where the pH, what's causing the pH, it's not fair for all of us that are on the sewer to absorb the pH cost. When, if just one or two people are, are causing the problem. So to find the problem. That's a whole nother, another issue there that should be recognized to everybody that's on the sewer, what's causing the pH levels to, to rise. And, and try to, try to locate where it's at and see what they can do on a pre-treatment of their own. Why should we treat something, we all pay for it when, when, you know, three quarters of the, or. Everybody, one person is causing the problem.
And I'm not familiar, but does the town have pre-treatment regulations?
I don't think so.
Because some communities will deal with that situation by, as part of the regulations. They'll say, if your chemical parameters, including a pH, and then there'll be any number of chemicals that might be. Detrimental to the treatment process. If your, say, commercial industrial waste contains things outside of the acceptable range. We just won't take it. And you have to do your own treatment onsite.
On site, right.
So that you know you're getting something that you can deal with.
That's a, that's a border health issue with the septics.
Yeah. Well, and if there's, I think a big part of the pH swings right now is the septic. Because it does change the pH as, you know, the septic is sitting there for a year or more.
If that's the case, then we need to know that, so we can, we can address that, okay? We need to, we need to find out where it's coming from, what's happening, nitrogen, pH, if that's what the cause is. Then we need to address it accordingly.
Yeah, and right now, it's more an operational issue and getting. Things under control, so we're not seeing the wide fluctuations in water quality coming to the wastewater plant. And then really just a look ahead to where we think the nitrogen limits may be and what might have to be done to accommodate that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
I just want to thank Mike, you know, and Brian. I mean, I think that, you know, we're being really proactive with this, because we don't know what the limitations are gonna be. We don't know when they're gonna enforce it with, through the permitting. And I think that, you know, the town of Hatfield has taken the appropriate action. To try to get a handle on it before those regulations even come out. So I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Always welcome.
Oh, it's a pleasure coming out. I look back and I was like, I haven't been here in a while, or at least to a meeting. I've been out here.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike. We'll be in touch with that information.
This next item, I just wanted to take a couple minutes to. The committee has not closed this work capital projects for fifteen through twenty. Expect, have that report into the board before the end of the month. However, let me just take the opportunity to highlight a few things. As usual, the issue is not validity of requirement. The issue is cost and timing of the cost. So I, I just wanted to highlight some of the key things here. For example, on this, let me make sure we're all looking at the same sheet. You have a thirteen, okay, you got a thirteen January? Yes, okay. Under the library. The first year that they potentially think that they might get their grant. For the library renovation is fiscal year sixteen. But, you know, that's a six point one million dollar item. The grant is for a three point two million. But understand, we have to front the total cost. And then we get reimbursed over a five-year period. I just want to put that out there. The fiscal year sixteen. It's not definite, but that'll be decided by. As a town meeting and a, and a vote. Slip down to. North Street. Go down to sewer. Go down to sewer.
I'd like to go back to highway because I've got a couple of questions. Phil's not here, so...
But it's all chapter 90.
Well, the chapter 90, I mean, we're looking at Bridge Street. Bridge Street is in real good shape. I don't know why we have to repave Mill and repave Bridge Street.
That's out fiscal year 2020.
Oh, okay. I was looking at the up...
And there's some...
I'm sorry.
Some issues.
I was looking at the North Street, Main Street.
Yeah, remember, this is a...
Yeah, okay. My mistake.
Under, back down on the sewer on the first page, the notice, well, again, Phil's in here. He should be here. North Street is probably their first priority on water and sewer line. And originally they're proposing to try and do that in fiscal year 15. But you add the two of those together, the water and sewer, and it makes sense to do them obviously at the same time. That's a million bucks. The sewer line is about $400,000. The water line's some $600,000. That's on the next page. So we've, DPW has bought off on pushing this off to 17, but, you know, this is work that truly, truly needs to be done.
Well, we certainly don't have to do the whole, well, it says just 3,700 feet.
That's just, that's just North Street. I mean, the ideal way, you'd probably do King Street and North Street at the same time in one contract.
Well, there's a big, there's a big problem up on North Street from about Mike Cahill's house north, okay? And what, what there is in there is, I guess the pipe kind of flattens out in that level there. So, and then it goes to either side, it goes back to King Street and it comes back, you know, to North Street. So that flat spot in there is the big major problem. I don't know, Phil, we're talking about North Street? I guess we did see it.
I'll go back.
Okay.
Well, wait, well, just to, we're just doing a preliminary discussion, very preliminary. Nothing's locked down yet regarding some of the proposals in fiscal year 15 to 20, capital budget for 15 and plan for 16 through 20. Now, I'm just focusing on some of the high-ticket items for the near term, 15, 16, 17, just highlighting some of those. We talked about the library. That's, that'll be decided by town meeting and a vote. But another key item in DPW is reluctantly agreeing, I think, to pushing off the work from 15, but the water and sewer needs, needs work there and the total cost of that is a million bucks. And when we throw that against a whole bunch of other things that are on the table, there's no question of need, but it's affordability and timing.
The way I understand it, the major problem in, in the area is in the center part of that street, okay? From roughly Mike Cahill's house toward north, there's that section that flattens off and then I guess it goes both ways?
Yeah, we actually, at Phil's request, went and did just a quick initial evaluation. Just, and what that involved is we went out and just with our own staff, did a very basic survey. So we got the elevation of the rims of all the sewer manholes and the invert elevations and house sill elevations so that we would just get a sense of where things really may be a problem. And you're correct, that whole stretch of road, the sewer goes from the King Street end, which is, that's a dead end at this point, and all comes back to connect to the new sewer right at the curve on North Street. Overall, it's very flat, less than, there's pockets that are less than the standard guidelines. And the standard guidelines are based on maintaining a minimum velocity so that you're actually moving solids and stuff through the sewer system on a regular basis. We also found at the very end, that last stretch right before, it's not the connection between the last old manhole and the new manhole. It's one back from that. That section, which is right as, it's right before where the problems have been happening, actually looks like it has a reverse pitch. The invert on the downstream end is slightly higher than the other end. It may have shifted over time. I don't, can't imagine it was laid like that, but certainly not helping matters. So it's a combination of the pitch or the slope that's on the sewer right now and the location of the sewer is within the grassed section between the sidewalk and the paved road. So it's convenient for, you know, access. You can be working around in the manhole without being in the middle of the road. The downside of it is there's a nice row of trees along that whole stretch of road. And the, it's an older sewer, so it was laid in very, just the pipe sections at that time were very short. So there's a lot of joints and there's a continual root problem, root intrusion into that main. Are, one of the things we looked at quickly is could you, to, because well, the way, the direction it goes now, we're limited by meeting the invert of that last new manhole that was put in within the last 10 years. So then it, you just work backwards from there. And if we do that, it really doesn't work in terms of getting the right slopes and making sure we want, we want to be as low, if not lower, than the existing sewer so that we know that all the house services are going to connect in appropriately and that we're not going to create a new problem. So in order to do it, we looked at, could you just shift the direction of that stretch or a major portion of that section of North Street in the other direction? And we can very easily.
Let it go to the King Street side?
Right into the King Street pump station.
Right.
That wet well is very deep. The line coming in from, you know, from King Street, discharging into it is like 18 and a half, 19 feet down. We would be just above that and be able to then achieve being below the existing sewer at all points and making sure we get the recommended slopes the whole way through.
So my question is then, at the 3,700 feet, is that the whole street or is that...
That's the whole street. The section we're looking at is roughly 2,000 feet.
2,000 feet.
Yeah, so we're talking about 2,000 feet of 8-inch sewer, probably eight manholes along that stretch.
So we could be looking at about 200,000 instead of 400,000?
Yeah, and the one thing I was just talking to Phil about is, based on other conditions and things, what we know about the town in terms of soils, 200,000 is a pretty good number if it's just a sandy silt. Where probably half of that is depths of 0 to 10, 0 to 10 feet is, would be the sewer. The other half may be 10 to 20 by the time we get to the end and try to connect in at like 18 feet down to King Street.
So what you would basically have is the center of North Street would be, would go to Main Street and the other half would go towards King Street.
The center being the curve.
Right, the first curve there.
That first major curve.
Okay, so right on the curve.
And we might pick up right as you're heading towards King Street, right as you come around that curve, there is a slight rise in the road. So there's maybe a house or two that we might pick up and continue to send towards Main Street. Because otherwise we're going to be trying to...
So we're not doing the whole street. We're only doing a part of the street.
The whole being from Main Street to King Street?
No, the whole, oh yes, the whole being from Main Street to King Street.
Yeah, we're not doing that because...
Does this reflect just part of it?
I don't know what that is.
We're looking at 3,700 feet.
This was all of North Street.
That was an initial all of North Street. We're looking at 2,000 feet, so about half of that.
So we're looking at about 200,000. I don't think that should be put off in 2017 because we're having a constant problem right straight. Every year we have a constant problem. What happens is it floods the people's houses out when we, when we rotorate it. I mean, we're back pressuring it and then we've got constant problems.
Right.
So I don't see how...
And it makes sense now that we know what the pitch of the pipe is and yeah, it doesn't take much to create an issue.
I think that, that should be put on as soon as possible, as soon as we can find a plan to do it.
That's one of DPW's top priorities here.
And the question becomes at that point, I know, if you're touching a street, do you do the rest of it?
And the water?
Right.
Do we keep it in the shoulder? Do we keep it in the road?
Well, you can patch it for the time being, the last couple of years. You don't have to do the whole road at that point.
That's true.
Okay, well, the sewer on that first section, sewer on the first section is on, is that on the right-hand side or on the sidewalk side? From coming off Main?
If you're coming off Main, it's on, it's in the road on that section.
Right, the sewer of the road, I think that is.
That's actually put in the road.
Goes off to the right.
As soon as you transition from the old to the new to the old, it quickly shifts right into the, into that grass strip.
Yeah.
So from an operational perspective, it'd be nice to get it away from the tree roots.
Yeah.
But every time you dig in a road, it's an added cost to the project.
What if we went further and went into the sidewalk, underneath the sidewalk, got away from the trees?
Yeah, I don't think you, you wouldn't solve the problem. At that point, you're not moving far enough away from the trees to make it worthwhile. You'd have to shift out to like the center of the road.
Putting in the right pipe, I don't know, what are you using now?
Oh, you're using PVC. Comes in 18, 20-foot length, so you don't have the number of joints.
So you don't have the bells, you don't have the joints that you get from it?
It would significantly reduce that issue.
Are they solid glued pipe?
No, it is a push-on slip joint, yeah. Which you need to maintain flexibility.
Grommets are in there, not like on Colonial Lakers.
Okay, so for working purposes, I think we ought to move that back to 15?
I would say move it back to 15 because if we can do it...
For 200.
Yeah. One of the things I'd like to check, and maybe the board knows, that 200,000's, assuming we're not dealing with ledge or rock along there. But I know there's, as you go east there, you know, there's that...
You'll hit ledge, anything from that curb, that curve right there.
Yeah.
That's where your ledge is going to, because it comes off of, behind Swazlowski's farm there and it comes along that hill and it comes down and under. So if you can picture...
But that's back a little.
Right, it's in the new part. It's heading towards Main Street down there.
Right, because you can see how the land rises up there.
You're past that, once you get past that curve, you're past that ledge.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't anticipate any ledge being in that new part.
Okay, let's, let's continue this. The water, you know, the water main is also...
It's on that project that was part of your, when we had that capital plan put together.
Yeah, from a while back. It was an identified, this is a really old pipe, needs...
And how, how many feet apart? Three feet apart, I think it's got to be from the sewer?
Ideally 10 feet is DEP's guideline.
So are you talking...
If you have that ability.
You're talking about restructuring this from the 3,700 feet of water to back to 2,000 feet of water, so you're doing both at the same time? Or you're doing the whole thing on...
If you have limited funds, it would certainly make sense to at least do the 2,000 that's concurrent.
Right. You're doing 10 feet. It seemed like you could put the water, the sewer in the road and the water off to the sided road.
Good.
That way you're not digging the whole road up.
Right.
That's a design issue, but I mean, does, would it make sense to do just the...
Well, that's the other conversation we're having out in the hallway.
Does it make sense to do just the 2,000, 2,000 feet as opposed to the 3,700 of water?
Well, it really doesn't matter at this point in time because there's two separate trenches. Yeah, but he's saying, we're going to be ripping up a road twice unless you're going to... Well, that's if you put both in a road, but if you put one on the side of the road and one in the road, you won't have that problem, especially if they got to be 10 feet apart. The road is only what, 12, 14, 16 feet there, that's all.
It's enough for two cars reasonably.
Yeah. So you could keep it right on the side of the road, the water line. You don't have to even touch the road.
I don't know about the stretch from right off of Main Street though. It seems more, from my recollection, more heavily treed on both sides. I don't know if it's, or if that, from memory correctly.
You'd have to look at it. Because there's trees on both sides in different locations.
What's the argument? Can we live with? Does it make sense to do it apart? Or does it make best sense to do both the water and sewer at the same time? I mean, you've got the workforce right there. You've got to dig them up.
And we're talking about applying for the small-town grant to do the road after.
Okay.
So that's going to cut the cost if that was awarded to do a whole reclamation of the road. I, I would probably say do it as a project, but do it in steps so you could back out, you know, do an option A, option B.
Yeah.
So you could back it out if you had to.
Yeah.
Well, right now the sewer is the priority up there.
Right.
I mean, that's the highest priority on the list.
Well, would you let, I mean, if you're going to dig it up?
Yeah, I mean, if it was funded, it would be ideally to do the whole project, the sewer and the water together, but...
It would be, and the only thing is the, if we're talking about the, trying to get some funding through the Mass Works program under that strap, the former strap piece, they wouldn't cover the infrastructure, they wouldn't cover the water sewer.
No.
It would be focused on the road.
Sidewalk.
Right.
So what, what covers, is there anything out there that covers infrastructure as far as water and sewer?
No, it's unfortunately, the only real options, funding options that are out there are rural development, which I believe the town's used in the past for the water treatment plant as a funding source and the state SRF program, both of which really are loan programs.
Yeah.
About two or three years ago at the conference, they talked about DPW issues and one of the thing the governor, I believe, said was that they were going to concentrate on infrastructure. And that never happened. So I guess the infrastructure doesn't matter to him, but when his water stops flowing, then I think maybe he'll be concerned.
I...
Let's, let's swing back to North Street water. We'll run Boston on Saturday.
I don't know how they think, okay? It's like...
Unfortunately, they don't think that differently from most citizens that unless there's a problem, it's out of sight, out of mind and they just take advantage.
Even when there is a problem, Mike, we get back to tunneling under 91. They don't even stand by there what, what they do.
But it won't matter until they don't have the service.
So that's why I say if it affects them, it'll happen.
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's close on the approach here. What's, what's DPW's best recommendation? Do, do the, do the water in 15 at the 602 for the 3,700 feet?
You're on the water now, Jeff?
Yeah, we're still, we're on a close on. We have 602,000 for the water on North Street.
602, where you come up with this? You've got 860 for the whole road, so that comes out to 430.
You're looking at King Street.
Oh, okay.
Wrong line.
Well, if we, the bottom line is if we can put the water off the sided road and not touch the road, put it on the, in the, in the grass side, then we don't have to worry about destroying the road.
Yeah.
All right? And so, you know, you could leave that where it is and do just a sewer first because you're, if you've got to be 10 feet away, you're not going to be, you're not going to dig up both sides of the road.
I thought we said it was a shorter, a closer distance.
You can.
I thought it was three feet or something, three or four feet.
DEP says ideally, if you're starting from scratch, you know, clean layout, no other obstructions to work around, their preference is 10 feet apart. And then they start saying, well, and then if you're closer, different elevations, water above. And then on top of that, there's just the reality, when you get in congested city streets where there's existing utilities, you just don't have a choice.
I mean, the last thing you want to have is the two joints side by side and have a failure on one and affect the other.
I understand.
Okay, that's the last thing you want.
So we think we can live with the 602 for the water in 17?
That's doing the whole street?
Yeah.
I think we can.
Do the whole street with water and half the street with sewer.
Well, the other half of the street already has a fairly new sewer.
That's what I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just saying.
So at the end, it would all be new.
So I think for fifteen, the goal would be to do the sewer.
Okay.
Sewer's clearly the priority on the street.
That's what I would say.
Okay.
So we're looking at two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Yeah, that's back on water, on the other page, first page.
Right.
Excuse me, sewer line, rather.
Sewer, yeah.
All right, and then just notice, you know, we're talking about King Street over there, and maybe we could combine those two.
Eventually.
In seventeen. We got the water transmission line, the jacking under ninety-one. For, that's four hundred thousand underwater. We can skip down the rest, the big numbers there are the grants. Notice Town Hall, Phase Two. That, I think could slip to seventeen, but it's either sixteen or seventeen. That's for the, now, we have funds that reduce that overall cost because we got, what, a hundred and eighty thousand?
I believe that's the figure, yeah.
Back against that, and we'll. We should go back to CPA again. See what else we might get. That's for, we've got that in sixteen, and the whole notion there is you got it in sixteen, then you could do the work in seventeen, and everything has to be done and operational by the end of August of two thousand and eighteen. Then on the next page, the other one I wanted to bring to your attention is the Smith Academy roof, exterior windows, doors. We get reimbursed fifty point five eight percent on, on, on that project from the state, the School Building Authority. But like the library where you get, we have to front the entire cost and then get paid back over five years. On this one here, this is an eighteen month project, has to be done within eighteen months. We get, we have to front the entire cost and then get reimbursed in fifty thousand dollar increments. Each time we accrue fifty thousand dollars in expense, we can submit and get a reimbursement for it.
Jeff, you've got it down.
There's a big, there's a big numbers here, and I just wanted to highlight them.
The school's got it down here to replace Smith Academy roof and exterior windows and doors. They wanna make that one project, I'd rather see it.
That is one project.
One project. I'd rather see it do two projects.
The state came out and they're the ones that.
Yeah.
That's why you're getting the grant.
Let's say it's. Yeah, but what the people aren't realizing is, the state can say what they want, but when it costs us a million dollars on top of everything else that we're doing, the state can go pound sand, okay? They're not paying the bill, but I don't care what they say. I mean. Well, the bottom line is, I don't, the windows are there, the windows are insulated, we need a roof more than we need the windows. All right, so the bottom line is.
The roof alone costs over a million dollars.
Yeah.
It's one point, one point one.
But that, that means the town only has to come up with half a million, not a whole million.
No, but according to this grant, you gotta do both. That's what, that's what they're saying.
They had they got.
I agree with you, but that's what they're saying, you either pay.
It would have been done three years ago at no cost.
Well, I tell you, that's not my fault, okay?
Everybody get the emotion out because there's more to come.
More to come.
I'd just like to make a point on that, that two point two million is a, is a, is a figure based on the maximum amount of money that the state will put towards this project. Everyone anticipates that that cost is gonna be actually considerably less than that.
Well, put it as two projects then, that's my recommendation is.
Well, no, the state, the state has, you know, is, considers this one project, there will be two separate contractors, however.
So it doesn't make sense, if they're two separate contractors, why not split the contract? Split the bid.
The, the state in, in their determination of, you know, whether or not they're gonna fund this project, considers it one project.
It's very frustrating to see the dollar figures grow and grow and grow, and the tax dollar, the people are gonna say no at some point, they're gonna say, no, we're not gonna spend this much money, we're not gonna give it to you for the roof, and we're not gonna give it to you for the, for the windows, and then.
That very well could happen.
We're back to square one here, not maintaining a building, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a roof, and the roof alone would cost more than what we end up paying, so. Okay, I just wanted to take a couple minutes on that. Mike, I don't know.
For real, these guys.
Maybe you could.
You can go do some real work now.
Maybe you can leave.
You got anything else, Mike?
Bring money next time. Thank you very much.
Come the next time and tell us how many millions you're gonna save us. When you get east of Worcester, just tell them reps are not invited for supper tonight.
Paul, vehicle lease?
Yes, the vehicle lease. Well, as you all know, we were denied financing on the lease for three vehicles with the initial financing company that we were dealing with. What was really disappointing about that is, you know, and I, the main reason appears to be that we hadn't had the two thousand and twelve audit done. But that was, you know, they knew, the company knew that had, that had not been done. And why, you know, they didn't at least hint at, you know, from the very beginning that this, you know, was a non-starter, I don't know, you know, because all of a sudden, you know, we go, we're waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, and then they say that, and they deny us, and, you know, without any hint, I mean, I was so shocked, I've never heard of this before. I happened to, you know, be talking to the auditor about it as well, and yet he had never heard of it before, but there it is. Anyways, we are in contact with another financing firm, and I have sent them all the, all the financial information that they need. Obviously, they're looking for a two thousand and twelve audit, so we don't have it, and they said, do you have internal documents? Yes, we do, so I've sent that to them, and I would hope that I would, they said they will be, get back in touch with me shortly, so I'm hoping to mean that that's gonna be this week sometime.
Is this the leasing company that we're dealing with, our bank, through our banking? That's where we're supposed to be going through, United or one of the banks?
No, this, actually, this, this company's, you know, we heard about them from other communities, they're out in Colorado.
Why can't we deal with something local?
Well, actually, we got.
I mean, we, we got.
Florence Savings.
Unibank, we deal with all the time for all our finances.
Unibank doesn't do leases.
They don't do it?
Yeah, most banks don't.
We did contact them.
Florence Savings.
I haven't, I haven't contacted them.
No, they won't do that either?
Mike actually talked to President Florence Savings.
Yeah, banks do loans, they don't, leasing's a whole nother thing. They're typically specialized companies that do that sort of thing. So we're, that's in the works.
We got something in the works. Infrastructure proj, oh, sorry.
One more question. We have a cruiser sitting out there, we have a van sitting out there, we've got equipment sitting out there waiting for us to purchase it, and people are calling on a daily basis, okay? Especially the cruiser, okay? When are we gonna pick up the cruiser? We don't have the funds to pick it up, we've got it okay through town meeting, but I guess, how much, how long do we have to wait to get an answer?
As I just said, I'm hoping to hear from them this week.
Okay. I would call them by Thursday or Friday?
He's been, he's been, he's been working this hard.
But my, my point being is, we gotta make it happen, and make it happen soon.
I mean, it was only on the eleventh that we got word that.
We were denied.
We were denied, excuse me, the seventh, so wasn't, it's not as though somebody's not moving hard on it. Go ahead, Paul, on the infrastructure project.
Yeah, on the Town Hall, obviously, it's winding down, we're able to meet in this room today. Technically, substantial completion is the end of the week.
Oh, good.
And, you know, we're, we're on time, you know, once that is done, we'll have a walkthrough with, with the architect and the contractor, building inspector, and representatives of the town to, you know, create a punch list. There's already, you know, several items that everybody knows needs to be done. So that's where we're at with that. On the emergency services building, progress continues slowly, though at the last job meeting, I, they seemed to get agreement from the contractor that that project will be substantially completed by January thirty-first. I haven't seen anything in writing yet, but it was agreed upon verbally.
I'd just like to comment on that, Paul, while you, just hold on for a second. When we had our job meeting, they wanted it to go into February, and, I mean, already they're way over the contract limit. And what I stressed is that they should finish by the end of the month, and if they don't, because they're having a problem with the subcontractors, and even the general contractor, to have one person there or two people here, they're not completing the project in a timely manner. So if the subcontractors, which are having a problem, get there, getting there, if they're continuing to have a problem towards the end of the month, my recommendation is to hire somebody, put them on notice, which Mark was supposed to put them on notice, and then we authorize Mark to go out, or we go out and hire somebody to finish the job, and let it come from the performance bond. Okay, because they're way over contract and they're dragging their feet big time, so we'll see how it goes towards the end of the month. Because I got that feeling that if they continue the way they're going, it won't be done until March or April, and that's not, that's unacceptable.
Well, just be careful about whatever the contract says.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's why.
Follow the terms of the contract and what are our recourses.
We just want the job done, just want the job done, that's all we want.
I don't know how the guy stays in business.
Go ahead.
No, that's all right. Well, the fire department exit, that's not my bailiwick. Any, anything to report on that?
Fire department exit, what, how'd you come out with that, Phil?
Oh, I have, I went over to RK Miles and picked up the cost estimate just for the materials and what he had drawn up. The materials are like thirteen hundred dollars just to do the roof and two posts. Said it doesn't include a door or anything else, that's just the roof.
Yeah, that's all we want to do right now, the roof, and then you just have a door.
I have it in front.
What's that?
I have it in front of me, if you wanna take a look at it.
You covered that out of facility maintenance?
So it's thirteen hundred dollars just for the materials?
Just for the materials.
Without a door.
Oh.
Where's the door? That's the important part, that's what everybody's been complaining about, it's the door and we don't have the door.
Exterior doors are gonna be probably around five hundred bucks right there. That, and then. And then you gotta have somebody construct it, and that's what you gotta get a price on. Well, that's, yeah, that's only the material.
Oh, I wasn't, okay, well. Oh, I wanna hear the total package.
I thought we'd have the whole thing, but.
Don't run away, Paul. I'll tell you what, while he's stepped out, we need to get back to him on town meeting articles and a number of other things, but let's talk for a minute about proposed warrant articles. Here, let me, let me just give you one of these, and excuse my handwriting all over the thing, oh, you got one. Okay. Excuse my. Well, I gave them all away.
Well, you got one there, right? So far, all these are in there, I saw, Jeff, I don't know.
Well, there may be three fiftieth anniversary, are we okay forming some group to?
Well, I think the question is.
Legality of funding was the question. You had that question, I don't know if Paul's answered that.
Yeah, we have to make, we have to see if we can use funding for that. There's eighteen thousand dollars in an account for the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Well, there is.
There's eighteen thousand dollars that were left over from two thousand, I mean, three hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. It was put into a special account to be carried forward, and I guess what happened was either the Historical Society or one of the nonprofit groups had control of it, and then they turned it over to the town, and the town at the time put it into the special account, only to be used for the three fiftieth.
Okay.
So that's how they, they put the money that was left over in an account to carry for, just like us. If there's anything left from the three fiftieth, it would go to the three seventy-fifth anniversary and put it into the same type of an account.
Okay, so at least, they wouldn't need any more than that.
There's startup money for that.
Yeah, there's plenty of startups.
Yeah, eighteen thousand dollars. Our biggest thing is to get somebody, get a, get a committee to represent or start the whole process, and that's what we should be looking at, probably a seven-member committee right now, or a five-member committee just for the town side, just to get everybody together and organized and moving forward here. You know, it probably should consist of a member of the Board of Selectmen, a couple of people from the, from the, you know, from the, from the community, and then maybe some from different, different areas, so.
But we're all, we all agree, okay, we got, gonna do something to kick that off.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I, I agree with that.
Just for planning. Medical marijuana, you've been working that with the group?
This should be all ready, we got our last, we did our last meeting last week, and the final changes were done, I don't know if he probably had the changes done? Did, or no, Tom, I guess Tom made the final changes.
I haven't seen anything.
Do you have a copy of that? Because he was supposed to pass it on to you. Well, it should be in the Board of Health, I mean, Board of Selectmen's hands anytime now.
Okay, now, is the planning, does the planning board have it here?
Planning board is all on board here. At first, as soon as the Board of Selectmen gets it, we have, I think it's seven days to review it and pass it on to the planning board, and then they're gonna have, they're gonna hold, I think in January, on February, they're gonna hold their meetings with, with the other ones that they have, so.
Noise, did we get that thing from Hadley?
Not, not yet, no.
All right, well, just, all right, we're, Hadley passed one just like this, and we just, they're an agricultural committee, or community, and we wanna see what they came up with, that they adopted, so just, just hang on that one for them.
Yeah, because the one that was submitted is not, is not gonna fly.
I sent something to Bob Wagner from Fairfax County, Virginia, they're having the same problem. Hazardous materials and waste recovery bylaw?
That's from the Emergency Management, that was in case a tractor trailer rolls over in our community.
So it essentially puts all the costs on?
Right, the cost is borne by the insurance company of the truck, or the, or the.
Okay, is there, is there anything we need to do?
Just adopt it, I believe it's all here, I believe it's all in the writing, in the form.
Okay, so there's no.
Put that whole thing together, and it should be adopted just the way it was, it'd probably go to, go to the.
Okay, but I mean, is there, I guess I need to, what's the requirement for a bylaw? Is a public hearing required on every proposed bylaw?
No.
Okay, so.
For zoning, yes, but.
I understand zoning, I mean, so we don't have to have one on this?
No.
You bring it to town meeting.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't know if there was a.
Well, you know, in some, it's.
Sometimes you have it just to.
Something like, yeah, something like a noise ordinance, I would definitely wanna have.
Pass it out in here and not in town meeting.
But I think, you know, something like the hazardous materials bylaw, that's pretty.
pretty non-controversial, and I think we just bring it to town meeting.
Okay. All we're doing is putting the cost on whoever caused the problem.
Right, that's exactly right.
This next one, CPC will bring this forward.
Yes, I met with them, and they approved the project, so...
This is just some study money to look at the bridge on the former Prospect Street Bridge going over the Mill River, as to planking it or making it for non-motorized traffic, bikes or walking. Just looking at feasibility. Mosquito spraying?
Mosquito spraying, I think the way we talked about it is to let it go on a separate line item in the budget, and leave it there for year after year use, but not under the Board of Health. Okay, just put it in as a line item on the budget process, and that was a $5,000 figure, so there'd be money there to take care of, like, storm drains and anything that needed to happen as it happens. And if it's not used, it won't be used, it'll be turned back, instead of going with an article on the spring.
That's just a line item.
It's just a line item at this point.
Okay, so it's not a...
Well, originally, we're talking about converting or joining a regional...
Yeah.
Okay, but that didn't materialize yet, so we're not ready for that.
Okay, well, remember Fran Gutchen was bringing that up with the HCOG?
Is he? Okay. Well, I don't know where it stands with that as a whole, like, the whole region. That's frankly...
Okay, but then that'd just be like buying pavement or buying asphalt through the HCOG, if they set up some master contract and other communities all use that.
Okay, to do spring. So we would use our funds, that $5,000, to buy into that, right?
Okay. I need to follow up with Fran on if anything's happened or they're doing...
Yeah, we certainly want to be prepared for this season because of the triple E and everything else that's going around here.
The zoning bylaw, this is just editorial. Now, again, it is... do we know if the planning board is bringing this up? It's purely... it's not substantive, it's editorial. Do we know if they're...
I'm not aware of...
Is that on the expedited...
What it is, here is 5.4.5c zoning bylaw. I read this one of these one day, and it's one of these handouts, like, we get all these notices about zoning changes. And when you read the zoning bylaw, which was quoted here, I mean, it's out of date. It doesn't at all refer to DPW, and DPW needs to get distribution on these things. It refers not to the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority, but to an Industrial Development Authority, which has been disbanded. It's just purely editorial.
So we need a revamping of the whole...
We need to... yeah. DPW needs to get recognized here. This was pre-DPW days.
Why can't we put Phil and Paul in charge of just getting that corrected?
Yeah, all... well, what I... there's no issues here.
No.
All I care about is process. Do we...
Just get the right wording in there.
Do we need to do something, or does the planning board take this, or...
It should probably be the planning board, because it is a change to the zoning bylaw. So I haven't talked to anybody about it yet, but I will.
Okay.
Well, they would put it on a change. They'd put it for a public hearing, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
A change of a bylaw?
Yeah. Well, they've got at least two more zoning changes to make besides the ones listed here, but I haven't got any detail on them yet.
We just can't give it to them. We've got to give them some input on what needs to be changed.
Add DPW, change industrial development to HRA. That's...
Well, if they're just a couple of changes, then that's very minor for them.
Yeah, it's just editorial kind of stuff. Somebody needs to read it, I guess. Expedited permitting. Are we gonna press with that?
I thought we brought that up last year. Didn't we bring that up last year?
Yeah, we ended up dropping it because the planning board hadn't done anything. Remember, that was some health issues of certain parties, and certain things didn't happen.
To expedite the permitting process, so it'd be shorter process.
Well, it's acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 43D, Chapter... yeah, 43D. And it says guarantees local permitting decisions on priority development sites within 180 days. And the prior chair thought, no problem, because they do all their actions.
Yeah, I remember Bob saying, "Well, we pretty much do that already."
We do it already, and this... the only reason I bring it up is it's another one of those things that the folks reviewing MassWorks grants look at, and it's, you know, another plus for your application if you've adopted this.
Adopted. So let's leave it in there and just get it adopted.
Okay, well...
I mean, we're doing it now, so...
I'll check with planning board on... are they doing anything on this Chapter 43D acceptance? Okay, mixed use. That's the mixed use bylaw. There was some misinformation at the last town meeting. I know planning board had some discussion in November about it. Are we... I guess it's up to them to bring it back. I think the plan was to bring it back. How about just asking while you're...
You just ask them if they want to bring the mixed use back.
Burning without a permit here.
Actually, I've talked to Wilma about it. I know they are, so...
Okay, all right.
That's the fire department. Bill Gellin, the Metro Worries.
Burning without a permit. Remember the Attorney General had some issues a couple of years ago with...
Yeah.
Our language?
Well, there was no enforcement entity identified.
Okay, well, so is... you talked to Bill?
I'll talk with Bill.
Get that language cleared. And net metering, remember we got... somehow that got overlooked last year. We got a...
It's true, the Hampshire COG, right.
From COG. Okay, you've got that?
This is where we're...
Okay, we're all set?
It's in this draft.
Okay. What is this Animal Welfare Bylaw?
Well, I raised that question, because I was looking at the current one. It looked kind of dated to me. But I did talk to the animal control officer, and said, "Well, you know, do we need to update it?" And he said, "No, I think it's working fine." So I say we just, at this stage of the game, just...
Drop it?
Drop it, yeah.
Okay. Do we want to create a Town Hall Stabilization Fund?
Leave it in there if there's any funds that we can do it. If not, we'll just drop it like last time, would be my recommendation.
What are we gonna have for money that was left here?
Very little.
Well, see if we can put it in there.
Yeah, well, that's what we were talking about, to be used toward the Phase Two. No, we do have money. We have the CPC.
Yeah.
CPC money.
We have, yeah.
It's about $180,000 that would go toward the elevator.
Yeah.
Already offsetting the, what, 655?
Yeah, but they're not gonna give it to you to put into stabilization. They're gonna hold it in their account.
Oh, I see. I see.
I just hope whatever's left on this project, he could try, Jeff.
No. I think where I get it. Okay, but we're gonna... we're gonna leave that in there.
Just leave it in there, yeah.
Compensated absences, again, this is the one where we were looking to create the fund. We got folks...
I think you didn't...
To accept the compensated balances.
Yeah, you created it, just not funded.
But we didn't create a fund to do it.
Right, right.
And this was the whole notion of avoiding someone walking out in the middle of the year on short notice, and then the department eating up out of their operating budget, all their expenses for vacation and all that.
See, I think that should go underneath a separate line item controlled by the Board of Selectmen, all right, and a dollar figure.
Well, that's how we wrote up the article.
Yeah, but...
So we are in control of shoes.
It shouldn't even be an article.
Okay.
I'm saying it should just be on the budget line item.
And the operating budget.
And the operating budget line item, it shouldn't even go on here. Because the minute it goes on here, it just stays and it sits there. This way here, it can be turned back every year, and we keep track of it, so we know we've got it, we know the money's there. Here, you can lose track of it and pay out the money and then forget the next year to reimburse that at account. This way here, it's reimbursed every year, or it's either used or it's not used, so...
It is set up under the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. So that'd be my recommendation, put it underneath the line item in the operating budget.
I'm just trying to remember, you know, I know, because there was... this was something that was recently created. I'm just not sure. I can't remember, you know, what the process for adoption is, whether you just...
No, we already... town meeting has already approved.
That's right, yeah. They've already approved the article.
Doing it, and we outlined in that...
So, yeah, so now we just fund it. Yeah, Ed's right.
So...
See if we did it through the...
One approach was to create essentially a, not a stabilization fund, but a fund that we put money against it to build up.
Yeah.
Ed's suggesting, "Well, no, just put it in the operating budget."
Let it go in the operating budget and forget about this article. That way, it's there every year and it's replenished every year. If you don't use it, it goes back.
All right, so drop it from this list, add to our...
Line item.
As a line item on the Board of Selectmen for operating budget.
Be my recommendation, yeah.
And I recommend we drop this next one, Capital Planning Bylaw. I think we can do... we need to do.
All right. What's the dog licenses?
Well, I added that. Remember...
Article over 70?
Lydia was in to see us, and there's two things. One, she wanted to drop, and I think adopt this Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 139. And there's two pieces of that. One, it allows us, with that adoption, to change the fees on dog licenses. And also, there's something in there if we choose owners of pets over 70. I don't know if you can waive part or and or all of the fee for senior citizens. There's a couple of pieces to that law.
In the Chapter 40, Section 139?
She's gonna come.
Okay.
She's gonna come forward with that. So it's just a matter of Paul following up and getting the language for her.
What else do you have on your list, Paul?
I know you and I have talked about transferring some funds that would be left over from the emergency services buildings...
Oh, yes.
...to an account to buy some new furnishings for the Town Hall.
Well, when do we put it... oh, okay. That'd be a separate...
I think you better bring that to town floor personally.
Well, it's gotta be on the Town Hall floor.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely.
It's gotta be on the Town Hall floor.
I mean, because everything's gotta go back.
Yeah, no, that's a transfer from one account to another, and that would happen.
I sooner see that money go again into this Phase Two project.
Stabilization.
Right. I mean, furniture, furniture, we can wait with. Everybody has a desk. Granted, it isn't the best-looking desk, but Ed, you just got done saying people are gonna start saying no. And to me, I mean, to me...
I'm talking about chairs for in here.
These chairs are fine for right now. I'm serious.
Well, when you have two meetings going on and you're gonna sit on the floor, then let me know.
I'd rather see it going into Phase Two. At least townspeople will think that we're using our heads.
There's twice as many as these chairs upstairs.
There's twice as many upstairs?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's enough to fill this room.
Actually, three times.
I thought this was it.
Oh, no.
There must be another 50 up there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
No, I'd rather see it going towards Phase Two of this project. At least townspeople will have a little more respect for this board, I guess. I guess that's what I'd say.
Yeah. Another one that I have, actually, it just came to my attention.
Help me on process on that. Would that have to go...
That would also have to go to town meeting.
As a...
To transfer funds from this project.
An article?
Be an article, yeah.
To transfer to that, to...
To the stabilization.
Because we didn't create... did we create this already?
No.
Okay, so it's got to be created, and then another... the one right underneath it will be to fund it.
To put the money in?
To put the money in, from that, what's left over from there to come into here.
So it's not gonna fall to free cash automatically?
It won't go to free... no.
No, because it's a capital project.
Not if it goes into an article. You can read the article the way you want it.
Right, right.
Okay.
The other potential...
Good, good.
Okay? The other potential article, I might as well jump ahead here a little bit, because I have... yesterday, I received via email a draft audit management letter, which is rather lengthy. The auditor wanted me to review it and get back to him, so I reviewed it, made some comments, and this morning I have a final management letter, which I will get to all of you. Yeah, it's rather lengthy. There's some very good recommendations in there. I think one of them is the, under state law, you can exempt personal property under $10,000. And the reason for that is it's a lot... it's a lot of work. Basically, it's a lot of work for nothing. You hardly get any income from, you know, personal property that's valued that low, and it's just more work for the tax collector and the assessors.
What's mine? $10?
Dan Rosenberg said this, I can't remember where or when, that they're trying to, actually, they're trying to pass a law for the whole state to do away with personal property tax.
Oh, oh, okay.
Like your jewelry. I mean, actually, it's supposed to... people are supposed to clean their own lawn mowers in their garages by law, by law. And he says it's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous, yeah. And this, you know, for these small amounts...
Corporations are exempt from it anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I know, you know, people may wonder how... you can do this. It's less work and it has virtually no effect on the tax bill. I mean, that burden gets shifted, but it's a matter of, you know...
It's a matter of $10, and it costs you...
A collector ought to be able to tell us exactly how much you get for them.
We did...
$10, $10 per $10,000.
Yeah.
No, I meant, what impact would be? Give a number.
Yeah, well, you know, I haven't... I want to talk to Jenny and Marie about this.
So this would be acceptance of some Massachusetts General Law?
Yeah, yeah. I tell you, we did it in my town about five years ago, and it was a good move.
Okay.
It costs you more to put it all up and put it together and get it out the door than it does...
That's kind of the bottom line.
The administration of it, yeah.
It's more money to try and collect it than you're actually receiving.
Okay.
Costs us more, right?
Yeah.
While you're looking at your list, do we need to do anything more with Ms. Benson's letter to us about how her parcels were zoned, classification?
Well, I think that's the planning board's dealing with that, and I think that's one of the zoning changes that they will be proposing, from what I understand, from Wilma.
Okay, I just care... she wrote to us.
Yeah, right.
Did someone answer the mail or tell her how it's being handled so that it didn't go into a dark hole? I mean, that's...
Yeah, from what I understand, you know, the planning board's responding to it.
Well, maybe you can just...
All I care about is someone...
I'll talk to Wilma.
Let the lady know, "We got it. This is how it's being handled." And, okay, so if something needs to come to town meeting to correct something, they can...
I know that they're planning on dealing with that.
Okay. All I care about is the person. Get an answer.
Right, right.
Did you have any others?
Not now, no.
Okay. Other folks are supposed to have them any this month, January, or anything else there's...
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. We're on track. What's next? DPW. Transfer Station?
Yeah, so, as you can see in your packet, that we had the inspection done that was part of our conditions that hasn't been done since 2006. We had Jeff Fauts do it from, right here from town. He works for Huntley. Put together the inspection at the transfer station for the yearly inspection, and he has sent it to DEP, and we haven't heard anything from them, which is probably a good thing.
How often is this supposed to be done?
It's an annual inspection.
Okay. The only thing that came out of that was maybe some repaving up there.
That's it, yeah.
At some point.
It's very minimal.
All the rest was...
Crack ceiling or something.
Those folks do a good job.
They do a great job up there.
They represent you well. Water and sewer rates.
Well.
I, I asked Phil to throw this on table, we're supposed to be looking at fees on a regular basis, and I don't think we've done an adequate job. You've brought it up in a couple of areas, but when you look at that capital plan for the years fifteen through twenty, we have millions of dollars of water and sewer infrastructure that need to be dealt with. And that's not talking about expanding the water and sewer system, that's simply maintaining what we have. And our fee structure, when we formed the enterprise system, we never brought in a backlog of undone capital projects. All we did was cover down direct and indirect operating expenses. So, we really need to be looking at our, our water and fee structure. I know the chair of the finance committee has brought up a couple of times, there ought to be no question, at least you make it to two and a half percent. You're paying two percent and your contract for wages going up, and there are other, other costs that have gone up as well. So, I'm just proposing that we have a DPW come back and show us what some of the other communities are charging and at least put on the table for our consideration, some adjustments to our water and sewer fee schedule. What someone's got, he's, he's not prepared to do that today.
Yeah, that's a whole separate issue.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
That sounds like, yeah, a separate meeting, and Mike Olds there as well.
Yeah, Mike, well, Mike's given us a good roadmap in terms of water requirements, and Phil's built those into his, his financial plan for capital planning. We don't really have the same for the.
Because I think you're gonna have to look at the whole picture here, you're gonna look at, you know, I know, what Hadley did away with the, the farming one there, that any, any, I think you're gonna look at the whole picture here, as far as what's being used and what the charges are.
Whole strategy, stratification of billing perhaps?
The whole picture, gonna have to look at the whole picture and, and then decide what we're gonna do here.
Paul, you had some, something on the operating budgets?
Other than to report that I have received most of the budget requests, not all.
Who haven't you received?
Let's see, I haven't received the tax collector's budget yet, the ambulance.
Well, Greg said he'd get it.
Yeah, yeah, he'll get it to me, and there's a, there's a couple other small ones, but, and, well, I haven't seen the, I haven't gotten anything from the school yet, but I'm actually meeting with John Roberts, the superintendent, on Thursday, and we're gonna go over his budget. So, I have most everything, actually, I just got the treasurer's this morning, so that was, that was a big one that was outstanding. So, you know, beginning.
So, you can start putting all that stuff into a.
I've already started, I've already started putting the spreadsheet together.
Okay.
And I'm actually meeting, well, this kind of segues into the next topic, but I'm meeting with the chairman of the finance committee on Friday.
Okay.
So, we can, you know, he and I can start talking, talk about scheduling then.
All right.
Then moving ahead, I've got a meeting scheduled with the, this will be our kickoff meeting for the Human Resources Advisory Committee on the twenty-second. I've got a number of topics I wanna talk to them about, including, you know, classification issues.
Okay. And we need to get that underway, because that's gonna impact the operational budgets.
Right.
Before we get to HR policy, there was just a couple of other things before I forgot, I missed. The reply to Mr. Harlow?
I've been talking to him verbally.
Okay, well, just, I mean, it's a yes or no?
Yep.
Reply to Ms. Casey? Resolution of the union clothing issue? Have we got that?
I don't have any idea, I heard it's not resolved.
Okay. All right, well, who needs to do what?
Ralph said it was resolved, the issue was.
I thought it was resolved, actually.
I thought it was resolved, but to date, no payment has been made for that invoice.
Well, was it near determination that it complies and?
Ralph was, when I talked to Ralph, he said that he was gonna bring it up to them, and like I said, there's no, and no time that it ever, anybody has ever put in for that, that type of bill, so, in my years that have been here, I've never seen that happen. This is the first time, and I said, you know, now, it's always been for work clothes. And so, he went up and talked with them, and when he came back to talk with you, I thought it was resolved when he came back.
I don't know if that conversation ever took place.
Ralph is now gone.
Retired, right.
Oh, is that right, I didn't know that.
He's, I don't know, I've met his replacement, I happened to meet him on his last day, but he's, he's gone. All right, well, I just don't want anything to fester unnecessarily, so.
Correct.
All right, push that along. And then, we had one, and you were gonna check. Mr. Beldon, Sandy Beldon, had, who works with, among a number of other things, Habitat for Humanity, had asked about potentially, is there any property the town could make available for use by Habitat?
Right.
For Humanity to build homes for needy, however, whatever the criteria is.
That'd have to go to town meeting.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but you, I think you were gonna check with.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Is there anything even suitable, I know there's some land that we hold that.
I know there's.
For a variety of reasons, we don't even.
There's landlocked land that, that's no, no good to anybody but your butters, okay, that's up on North Hatfield Road. That's about the only thing that I can think of that, that was out there. So, we don't hold any other real estate unless we take it by, through taxation, non-payment of taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I had Jenny print out all the property cards, and I, you know, spent a little time on them, and I, you know, because most of the property that we own is watershed land, so. Anything, anything that was up there, you know, I disregard it.
Off limits, that's the reason for buying it.
And then, you know, most of the other property at school or town hall or whatever, there was maybe a half a dozen, you know, fairly small pieces of property that, you know, just based on, on looking at the card, you know, might be a possibility, but, you know, each one of them would have to be investigated, and, you know, I've, I'm gonna get together with Sandy, well, I'll see Sandy in another week or so, we'll talk.
Again, this is just another thing.
Yeah.
Let's answer the mail and get back to them, close them, and let them know what we're, we haven't blown them off, haven't.
No, no, no.
Somebody's working it, somebody's looking at it.
And pulling the, because he's on the Human Resources Advisory Committee, so.
I thought he was leaving, then.
No, 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 he's had.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got one other thing here.
We'll bring back, you'll bring back to the board any.
In regards to the building, building behind us here, the emergency building here, I would like to vote today to, to put a cap on, on, because that, that whole money, it says includes furnishings over there, I'd like to put a limit, no more than twenty thousand dollars, I think that would be the cap that, because they got desks to buy for the meeting room or the training room and stuff like that, and I think, you know, between the TV screens and the monitor and that kind of stuff, I don't wanna see them go over that. My suggestion would be to come up with.
I don't have.
Twenty thousand dollars as a cap.
I agree with some kind, I agree with some kind of cap, but I'd, rather than starting with the money, I'd like to see what the proposed buy is, and then we can.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to approve everything anyway, so.
Yeah.
So, if, but in line, in line with your.
They've got a list.
Well, let him bring.
They do have a list.
They got a list, and I don't want it to go over that.
Let's all look at the list and then decide.
The last, the last of the list was right around fifteen, and then they're, they were looking at two or three TV screens, that would bring it up like eighteen, and I don't want it to go, there's no reason to go over twenty thousand on that whole thing, so that would be.
Agree, let's look at the list of what they're talking about.
Look at a list, yeah. So, we'll get a list here, and, but they wanna start ordering the equipment, so.
I know, I know.
That's why we wanna take care of it.
We can do that next meeting.
Okay, make sure that's on our, our list for next meeting.
Yeah.
Before you, before you're off the stage.
It would be police and fire.
Police, fire, and ambulance.
Yeah, and ambulance, so three of them.
They've each got their own.
Yeah.
Well, I think they may all have one. I need, I need to do the executive session minutes review. So, please, just give them.
I just found some, but they're.
Executive session what?
Minutes, minutes.
Oh, the minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, I just found a pile of them.
I don't care, just.
There's a bunch in, in his safe, or what, we used to be in your safe, I hope they're in your office somewhere.
Yeah, well, I just found them, I just found them, because, you know, when we emptied out the safe, a lot of stuff got tossed, and other stuff got buried, so.
Start with the ones that we've done within the past years, and then you work back, however far you get, you get.
Well.
Okay, because there's, there's tons of them back from the eighties and nineties, probably.
Oh, God, I presume someone looked at it and.
Destroyed anyways.
What's that?
Some of that stuff can be destroyed after several years, can't it?
Some of it, personnel issues gotta be kept for a lifetime. You take some of the decisions that were made on the highway department back when we had discrepancies and stuff, that's all, that's a lifetime on, on some of that stuff. But you can't, you can't discharge, you can discharge some of the stuff, but some of it, as far as personnel, has to stay classified.
Okay, well, I just, I hope I don't have to go back to the nineteen eighties.
Speaking of which, destroying things, I've got like two boxes at home of meeting papers, I wanna have them shredded over here.
Bring it into key, I, I go through my whole.
I'm just saying, we should have something for our.
Yeah.
Material to be shredded.
I will take and I'll bring it to key, and I'll tell her what needs to be shredded, like, like the minutes of executive session, these need to be shredded, and she'll shred them, okay?
Well, I was actually.
Because you certainly don't want them.
This cousin with Phil too about the possibility, he's gonna look into it. Like, maybe once a month, every two months, if we could get that truck up at the transfer station, you know, I mean, I.
Even a couple of times a year, just for the public to use it, that'd be great.
Just for the public, let them pay for it, but I mean, there's a lot of people that have documents at home that they don't know what to do with, I think it'd be a pretty good public service.
East Hampton Savings Bank, once a year, does that in about August, and they send a letter to all the people that belong to the bank, to anything they have, documents to be shredded, they allow up to two big, big boxes for. File box, and they take and throw the whole thing in, you see it shredded, it's all little cubes when it's ended.
Well, we did this last year, here. I think the Board of Assessors arranged the contract, no, it was for everyone, for everyone.
Yeah, but I mean, just let us know or something.
I didn't know it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, so in the meantime.
I did talk to Jenny about it just before we came in here, because Jan had raised the issue, and I guess someplace under a municipal contract, there's a shredding company that does that sort of thing. So, it's like the HCOG that you can call.
Okay.
So, we're gonna look into what the cost.
Okay.
When we do things, let's get the word out there, we're not getting the word out, we're not getting the word out.
This is, this is more for up there at the, the transfer station.
My point is, we're not getting the word out because the people aren't hearing about it, even we're not hearing about some of the stuff that's happening, and that's wrong, okay? I mean, it's start getting, let's get our act together from the top here and go down.
Don't, don't tell my wife we're gonna be destroying papers.
You know?
She'll, she'll have a.
Well, no, no.
Truck stopped by our house and.
What, what, the documents that we are shredding are the ones that are, are ours and our package.
That's what we're talking about.
Everything is in our package, she has as far as for the documentation for the meetings.
She has the record copies.
Okay, she's got copies, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the excess stuff that we don't want just floating around.
Like, these things.
Paul, you were, you were gonna talk about the HR policy.
Yeah, I, I'm not looking for the board to make any decisions today, but there's, you know, going through a couple of sections of the HR policies, there are, you know, what I consider to be some peculiar provisions. And, you know, I, I got into this because, because of the whole issue of how all employees in, in Hatfield are essentially treated as hourly employees. And everyone has to fill out a time sheet, and that was brought to my attention, well, it's actually in the personnel policies, and sure enough, it is. But certainly, elected officials and people who work under contract should not have to fill out a time sheet. A lot of the other personnel probably should be considered salaried employees, but actually, that's, so I've got some questions there, but that's something I wanna bring to the HR committee.
Yeah, I would suggest that.
Yeah.
Because I think you.
What I would like to.
I did ask about some of that, and.
Yeah. What I'd like the way this is read.
Everybody, including CEOs, have to fill out a time sheet. Seriously.
Well.
I mean, you could, you could check into it, I'll just.
Yeah, all I can say is I've been in the, worked in the public sector for twenty-five years, never had to fill out a time sheet till I came to Hatfield.
I was SES six at the time they were grading, there was no higher grade in the federal service, except for political appointees, I had to do it with a time sheet.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, the issue is, okay, so what if I put down, I worked fifty hours that week, am I gonna get anything more than my weekly pay? No, of course not.
But it comes down, that's, that was my point here, okay, because I just made a note for myself, that you've gotta accept elected officials. If you, if you want us, if, if you put in the fifty or sixty hours a week, okay, and you're only getting paid for forty, when the time comes to regroup on your contract, then that's when you pull out all this documentation, you say, look, I'm putting in sixty hours a week, I'm getting paid for forty, and I wanna renegotiate my contract, if you don't have that, you can tell you to go pound sand, how do I know that you put in sixty hours a week?
Yeah, well, I.
So, it makes sense on that end.
Well, it does to a certain extent, though, I think, you know, if you're a salaried employee, you, you should be judged on, not on how many hours you put in, but on your performance. Are you getting the job done and how well?
I'll tell you the way it works, Paul, the way it works is the day we do your performance, and let's say you had a real lousy month, that you didn't do anything, and that's all we remember when we come to do the performances, all the bad things you did in the last month, but yet you put in thousands of hours the nine, ten, eleven months before that, and now you're judged on the, the month that you had a real bad month, what are you gonna say?
Well, anyway.
That's where it comes back to bite you.
Well, we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
I, I've shared with you my comments on.
Yeah, yeah.
Briefly.
And then before that, you know, the work week begins on Saturday, ends on Friday, I, I'm used to seeing, you know, Sunday through Saturday, and not, I just.
I used to be on Sundays, huh?
Raise the question mark there.
That was Louise, I think Louise and or Marlene put that in, and I've forgotten what, there is a rationale, it has to do with DPW, I think.
Yeah.
I've forgotten just what it was, but.
Yeah, but getting back to the time sheet, I know when I fill out my time sheet, it's, it's a Sunday through Saturday work week.
Oh, all right.
And then, back down under payroll submittals, the second sentence, each department head shall be responsible for maintaining a permanent record. The treasurer's required by state law to keep.
114?
Uh, one, yeah, 111.4, section two. Each department head shall be responsible for maintaining a permanent record of the time worked for each employee. The treasurer, under state law, is required to keep all payroll records from here till eternity, so why do we wanna keep duplicate records? I raised the question.
We don't, I, I understood that the, the record schedule required, you know, the supervising...
The treasurer, the treasurer is required by state law to keep all those payroll records.
Okay, but I would say that this should say, each department head shall be responsible for maintaining a permanent record of the, not time worked, but vacation time, and sick time, and all that other stuff that matters. In Phil's case, you've got clothing allowance, you've got all this other stuff that's given, I mean, we should have a printout of everybody that, that puts their money in, you know, for how much money they have left. If clothing, clothing allowance is X amount of dollars, we should make sure nobody goes over that X amount of dollars, I mean, who's monitoring all that?
Well, that, the treasurer's office, the treasurer's office.
No, the treasurer's office is not monitoring the clothing and all that other stuff.
Oh, that, well, no, no, not that.
Okay, there's a lot of stuff that's not being done, and it's cost accounting here.
You're gonna run this by the HR folks, let them take a stab.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just another peculiarity, 11.6 overtime. Yeah, I guess the, the last sentence, department heads may incur overtime with notice to the town, I've never, you know, we're talking about salaried employees here, why would they be getting overtime?
Uh, well, let me, let me back up.
Yeah.
All overtime must be approved, you know, normally, if you know you needed, normally you would want your department head to approve overtime in advance, that's just standard management.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I've, I've looked that up, and yeah, that's a requirement, you know, state labor laws.
And then, the exception is emergencies, well, get that.
That's only if you were hourly.
But are, everyone is not a department head.
Yeah.
But it's saying specifically, department heads may incur...
Says department heads may incur overtime.
Overtime.
I've never heard of such a thing.
There's no such thing as a department head.
Well, is the CIA director's not a department head, so, but...
Well, it goes back to, you know, it goes back to, okay, who's salaried and who's hourly?
I see, I see.
You know, hourly employees get overtime, salary people do not.
I see, I see your point.
So, make it that, make the wording state just that.
Yeah.
You had a question on carry, carryover? Oh, accrued monthly? Yeah, we do, we accrued monthly.
Oh, vacation, yeah.
We accrue vacation, and we accrue sick leave monthly.
Yeah.
That way, we're not paying it all up front, we're paying it, pro-rating it over.
Okay, well...
As you earn it, you got it.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm used to seeing, I'm used to seeing sick leave accrued, I've, I've never come across vacation being accrued.
Our federal government does it that way.
Well, and, and the main problem with that is, technically, if you wanna take a week off in July, you can't. You haven't accrued enough time.
That's what happens with your new employee, where you eat up all your vacation, yeah, you build it up.
That's why we allow two weeks, carry 10 days to be carried over of the individuals down here.
So, the, so the clock doesn't start ticking again, every July one?
Each month, to month, to month, to month, to month.
Okay, all right, that's why I have a question right there.
But if you can, if you save 10 days from your previous year...
You can carry it over.
Then you can carry it over.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the notion there was to limit, and this really came up in the DPW, where you don't, you don't want folks to be carrying over this big bow wave, and then walk out the door retiring, and you owe them mega bucks.
Well, in the, in the town that I worked before, we basically had a use it or lose it policy.
Yeah, well, this is essentially it, except...
The only way you could...
Takes care of what you were just talking about, you wanna take that vacation in July.
New employees are under a different contract than this, some of these, the older employees come underneath one section, the newer employees come under another.
Yeah.
That's the contract, folks.
We wed that out.
So, yeah, that's it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, ideally, this all oughta be online, all like, counting for, instead of paper, or anything else?
Yeah, I've got a, a couple of other things here. I mentioned this to Paul, and, and I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I, I think it'd be a good idea to maybe get ahold of Kathy Gao, or put somebody in charge of, like, paintings throughout the town hall here, and all the walls, and everything's are all done, maybe to locate specifically where paintings should go, and then have either local artists come in once a month and share the space, or whatever, and it would, it would dress up the walls and make it look better, and Kathy could do that as far as the Historical Society Commission, Society or Commission, I should say, maybe to show some of their pictures around, around the walls and stuff like that, and what they would wanna put up, but, you know, looking at the walls, beautiful walls now, and you could, you know, do some paintings and stuff like that, where people can enjoy them.
Actually, Paul and I had that conversation some time ago, and the notion being, we want one, let's pick a theme for what goes up on the walls, if it's historical, or whatever, or somehow Hatfield, and then stick with that theme, so there's, you don't have one thing here and something else that clashes with the next door.
You could put themes in the rooms.
And then, and then we also talked about using the historical folks to, perhaps if we picked a historical theme, to come up with items that might be displayed throughout. No, we, we're, we're all in agreement on that, and I...
Yeah, I've, I've already talked to Kathy, yeah.
Okay, and then we need a clock in here.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right, it's because of that wall.
A big one.
A big one, right? Even with that...
He's almost out of tape.
Okay.
How many?
Yeah, we need a big one with an alarm, or buzzer.
No, you want a, a good size one, like they have in the schools, and the reason you want that is because when you limit people, or right up here... Yeah, but if you put it in the back, everybody could see, well, everybody could see it too, so you could allow somebody, you know, somebody five minutes or whatever to speak, and you can, you can monitor that. And then, let's see, there's that, also...
My point is, Paul was already kind of stepping out on some of these things, the interior displays and...
There's also places in here that need to be burglar alarmed at some point, and that, that we need to look at that.
That's a good point. Jan, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Paul, anything else?
Oh, yeah, one, one thing. I don't remember seeing this last year, but I got this memorandum from the Department of Housing and Community Development. "In an effort to ensure compliance with Section 52 of MGL Chapter 121B enclosed, the Department of Housing and Community Development is issuing this reminder to all redevelopment authorities and consolidated departments of community development regarding the submission of annual reports. If not done so already, please submit an annual report summarizing your redevelopment authority's activities, receipts, blah, blah, blah."
A redevelopment?
Our redevelopment authority is essentially defunct, so I'm not sure...
Well, why don't we send it to the members, existing members?
What do you mean, the redevelopment, it's, we still have it on the books, and it's still...
Well, it's still on the books.
There's still people that are there, they just gotta put it together.
I'm not sure who's left.
There's Larry Williams, there's Harold, Harold Green, there's Tom Rothmassler, and from what I understand, there was Bob Bartlett's son. So, those were before that were there.
I'll have to check the list, but it seems to be there's...
It's not defunct, it's still there, because we don't...
They don't meet, they haven't, they haven't met.
They may not meet, because there might not be anything going on, but at some point in time, you want that commission to be available, because if we have some kind of a, whatchamacallit, money is available, that it's a whole separate entity, and you don't wanna...
Well, I know what they are, but I think there's been resignations, and I'm not sure if there's, you know, I'm not sure who's left.
I think there's only one opening.
Well...
I, I, I know where to look.
But that's...
Touch base with those folks, if there's, if there's not, we can respond that it's defunct.
Is this in the package, or was this my, this is about the fire department budget?
That was in the package.
Okay, and...
Yeah, I saw that, of course, we're gonna look at alternatives to hiring somebody, like, how do other communities do this? Can we piggyback them? What, you know, what's the nature of the job? Is it purely administrative? If it is, we could probably hire...
It's more than, more than administrative.
Does it have to be something substantive? 'Cause we don't have anybody on the staff that's substantively qualified for, if it, if it's a substantive kind of thing.
Any one of the firemen would probably be qualified to do this here.
Bobby Ossopovitz used to do that.
Was that?
Bobby Ossopovitz used to do that.
Yeah, the chief used to do that, that's, so it's, if it's purely administrative...
And what it is, it's, it's doing inspections of all the businesses, working with them...
I don't think he spent all that much time on it.
You guys have that at your place?
Yeah.
Every, every business has it at their place, and it's a matter of just, and that's what I said to Billy, he's gotta put a computer in here to make sure you monitor, get everything in, everything loaded into this here to, to get it all up, up to date, and a lot, a lot of work to do to put that thing together this year.
Well, they oughta transfer over from Board of Health all the money that was assigned
Yeah, right.
On the Board of Health to do this for years.
That's when you guys said that you're gonna do it, and Ellen didn't know what, she just thought if, if an incident came up, she was gonna inspect it, well, that's not the case here, I knew better, that's why I said, "No way, we're not doing that." You guys pulled the fast one.
We never changed it.
And it's not gonna happen again, not my watch.
I don't even know when it got changed, it was always...
We, we never changed it, it was always Board of Health.
Baloney it was.
No, it was, no, it was Bobby, it was Bobby Ossopovitz when he was the chief.
It was done when the regime, probably back in your days, was done.
Well...
That, they turned it over to the Board of Health.
No. That was done before that, that was when they started, I think when they started a full-time chief, and that was before my turn.
Whoever it was didn't know what they were doing there, didn't know how to, how the process worked, 'cause when I looked at it, and you told me I had to be appointed, I said, "Don't remember."
All I remember is, Bob Ossopovitz did it, and I think he did it before he was even chief.
Yeah, he, he did, he did it.
I mean, he kept doing it as he was a chief, too.
Oh, is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, as far as I know, he did.
There's a, there's a lot of work, a lot of work to this thing here, just keeping the records up to date, and...
Well, that'll be an issue for operating budget discussions.
Yeah.
And they need to come prepared with, what are some alternatives in terms of...
I'll let them know that.
Ways of doing this, and then defining what in fact the job is, what kind of expertise